Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting door and welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. I'm gonna start the meeting with introductions of the committee and staff. To my far right is Heidi Weglenner, Supervisor Heidi Weglenner. To her left is Jason Cannell, Supervisor Jason Cannell. And to his left is Supervisor Steve Peters. I'm Chair Jerry Volle. And over on my left is the Senior Planner Majid Allen. And next to him is the Assistant Zoning Administrator Dan Iverson. Next item on the agenda is public comment for any matter not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak on a matter not listed on the agenda will have five minutes to speak at this time. We may place it on a future agenda at my discretion to allow the committee to discuss the issue. Does anyone want to speak on any item not listed? Okay, so we'll move on to the next item. But before we start, I'd like to go over the committee rules. The committee will be conducting a public hearing on zoning petitions and conditional use permit applications. Any person wishing to speak in favor or in opposition must fill out a white registration form and submit this sheet to staff. When a petition is called, the petitioner will be asked to come to the front of the room to address the committee. We ask that the petitioner state their name, address, the petition request, and the reasons for the request. The petitioner will be given up to five minutes to address the committee. The order of registrants is as follows: after the petitioner or agent, any other persons wishing to speak in favor, then persons wishing to speak in opposition. All speakers will be given five minutes to speak. If there is opposition, the petitioner or agent will be given an opportunity at the end of the public hearing to provide a rebuttal to the opposition. The rebuttal will be given three additional minutes. All speakers will address the committee and not the individuals in the audience. There will be no running debate. In other words, there will be no debate amongst the audience. Any persons that are disruptive will be asked to leave or be removed. We do have some rules also regarding action on petitions. The committee will not take action on a petition until the applicable town has filed a report with the committee. The deadline to the towns to submit an action report to the county is the Thursday prior to this meeting date. Public testimony will be taken at this meeting, however, if town action has not been received, a decision will be made at a subsequent meeting. If there is public opposition on a petition, the petition will be postponed until the next meeting. This will give the petitioner, opposition, and the staff an opportunity to work out matters between parties. If the town's actions have been submitted and there is no opposition to a petition, the committee may act on the petition tonight and refer the petition to the county board. If the committee passes the zoning petition unanimously, your presence at the county board is not necessary. However, if the zoning petition is controversial, it is advised that you attend the county board meeting. If the committee takes action on a conditional use permit, this is the final action of the county. In other words, it will not go to the county board, it will be final upon the decision of this board. The zoning petitions which are recommended for approval will be placed on the February 21st County Board Agenda for Action. The next meeting of this committee is Tuesday, February 26th. Those are a lot of rules. Does anybody have any question on all the rules? Okay, I don't see any hands. So let's get started. I'm gonna start with petition. I have one question for the folks from Oak Park Quarry. You have one petition after yours. Would it be okay if I moved that up before your public hearing starts? Is that okay with everybody? Okay, thank you. So we'll start with petition number 11371. It's a rezon. It's Mary Ann Gardner in the town of Middleton. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Well, thank you.
My name is Jim Gardner. We have asked for a rezoning of our lot at 8461, or Road, from A1 to R3. And the purpose of the rezoning is essentially so that it would enable us to position a home farther back and reduction of the setback on this.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all.
Thank you. The staff?
The town has approved this petition with no conditions, although I think you may want to ask if there's anyone else wishing to...
Oh, anyone else wish to speak in favor or against this petition? Thanks, Majid. All right, now you can go.
Okay. The town has approved this petition with no conditions and staff has no recommendation other than to recommend approving.
Okay. I have a, I entertain a motion from the committee.
I have approval. Second.
Second. You got a motion and a second? Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to... Thank you. We'll move on to rezon number 11372. The Iverson Living Trust. Who is the representative here tonight? Majid?
I contacted the applicant, as we did with many applicants with petitions that are non-controversial, shall we say. And he was very appreciative of not having to negotiate the roads all the way from out in town of Mary. So this proposal is to split off the existing residents onto a two-acre parcel and farmland preservation zoning compliance for the remaining land.
Okay.
Don't know if there may be anyone here to speak in opposition.
Yes. Anyone here to speak in favor or against this petition?
So, town has approved this petition with a condition of a notice indicating that there are no further development rights on the remaining ag land, the A4 rezoned parcel.
So there is one condition?
One condition, yes.
Okay. I entertain a motion from the committee.
Move through. Move to approve with second.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Petition number 11373, Ronald Lund. Also choosing not to be here tonight, right?
Very thankful. The agent is out following snow.
Okay.
Again, I, we're unaware of any opposition. This is a very straightforward proposal. Township has approved it. They're simply seeking to add a little bit of additional land to the existing undeveloped residential parcel that will allow them to install a driveway access that avoids going through a forested area.
Okay.
The town has approved this petition.
Okay. So anyone here wishing to speak for or against this petition? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion from the committee.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Move on to petition rezon 11375, Mark McNamie.
We're at 11374, is...
Oh, Andrew, I'm sorry.
We actually do have someone here to speak on that one.
Sorry, Andrew, I didn't mean to skip you. I wasn't trying to skip you.
No, yeah.
You came here, and you're definitely gonna get to speak today.
Yeah. We're just rezoning the house off the farm and stuff to sell. Here's a survey, I don't know if you get me that?
We have what we...
Oh, you have it, yeah, okay. So, that's it. We're just here to rezon 8.83 acres. From A1 to, to R3.
Very good. Anything else?
Nope.
Did you have anything you'd like to add?
No.
Okay.
Except my wife, so...
Okay. Is... Is anyone here wish to speak in opposition to this petition? Hearing none, I will go to the staff for their report.
Town has approved this petition with no conditions.
I entertain a motion.
So move. Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Go ahead, Pat.
I have a question, too. It mentions that in the town plan section of the staff report that it should, that current owners of 35 acres or more than 1985 farms should record an agreement to clarify allocation of a remaining home site.
That, I believe, has been sort of resolved by virtue of the recent sale of the...
What's...
So the question was, there was one split remaining on the farm. But my understanding is you sold the property that would be eligible for that final split.
Yeah, you sold that, yeah.
So it sort of resolved itself in between the time of their application and the writing of the report.
Does that answer your question? Got a motion and a second?
Correct.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
So then it's supposed to the county board and then...
It'll go to the county board, uh...
You, county board is 21st. You'll want to have your surveyor get the survey into this gentleman at his earliest convenience.
Okay.
But otherwise, you'll hear from us in the mail.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, have a safe trip home. Now we'll move on to 11375, Mark McNamie.
And I think Mark also was happy not to attend the meeting because he's coming from Oliver York, far northeastern Dane County. This proposal is to resolve a current zoning violation on a property. There are a total of three structures being used as dwellings. One is a house, one is a converted commercial structure, and another is, well, apparently a studio. And zoning staff discovered this, and they're seeking to divide the property into three lots in order to resolve the violation, which states that essentially you cannot have more than one principal dwelling on a single parcel of land. The township has approved this petition. Staff, as indicated in the staff report, town of Yorick has a limit of one lot for every 75 acres. So you've heard of one for 35, theirs is more strict. So their policies would not allow for the subdivision of this property. However, they did approve it. I will say that it was a split vote, I believe. Plan commission voted it down, the town board voted it through two to one. Staff is recommending that if the committee were to approve it, that a condition be placed saying that essentially the three lots cannot be sold independently of one another. Essentially, you've got a situation where you've got three dwellings on a property, you're not entitled to the development rights or the ability to subdivide the land. This would be one way to resolve the violation and not run completely afoul of the town's density policy.
Okay. All right. Question? Go ahead.
Have you brought the option up with the petitioner?
We did, yes. I spoke to the petitioner about that, and his understanding of it and agreeing to it, where we left it after my phone call, and we had reached out to him months ago as well, was to say, you know, he's concerned he might like to try and have them separate at some point in the future. But I explained that we technically require a change in the town's comprehensive plan and that, given the split vote with the town and the fact that it's currently inconsistent as presented, that this was at least an option that the staff could, you know, get behind in terms of, again, allowing him to resolve the zoning violation without completely disregarding the town plan policies. So he was accepting of it, a little begrudgingly so, but it's about the only path forward as it stands.
So there's one condition now?
One condition to de-restrict the lots, tying them together. There is gonna be a requirement, this doesn't necessarily need to be added in as a condition on the zoning approval regarding how the septic, so there's a joint septic system between two of the lots.
All right.
But environmental health will be...
Everybody understand? Okay. I don't know if I ask, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? If not, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I'll approve with condition, with the condition.
Do I have a second? Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion carries. I just noticed we've been joined by the Director of Planning and Development, Todd Vialanti. Todd? I don't know, did I miss you when we did the other introductions?
I was bringing chairs in, so I was kind of in and out of the room.
All right, well, I'm glad I caught you.
Jerry, while you're at it, you've got another...
Oh! We've got Senior Planner Pam Andros hiding over there. Sorry, Pam. So we'll move on. No, I've lost my... We're at 11376. I went to sleep on you. The D&amp;J Allme partnership. Hello there.
Good evening.
And you must be John.
I'm John Allme. I reside at 2448 Leslie Road, I'm a partner of D&amp;J Allme Partnership. The property we requested rezoned is at 2394 Leslie Road. There was an old farmhouse and buildings that were removed, and we wanted to, me and my wife are gonna tend to build a house on that site, and we'll want to rezon four and a quarter acre, about 4.25 acres to A24.
We've got anything else? Thank you, John. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? Majid?
Town has approved this petition with no conditions.
Um, okay. Was there a note about an action on February 11th or something like that?
That's the next item.
That's the next item? Okay. All right, sorry. I guess at this time then I entertain a motion. And a second, please? And a second? We got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Now we've got petition 11377, Larry Thiemann.
And I believe this is one where the applicant is grateful for not having to negotiate the roads downtown. This proposal is simply to adjust the boundary between two existing lots, adding a half acre to the neighborhood to the north. And about as straightforward as they come.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing none, I, this time, I'd accept a motion.
The town did approve this one, and we, this did come in hot, but there was a request because they were trying to get the closing done and the schedule in the backlog having delayed the previous meeting. We thought the committee might be amenable to considering the town's action from last night. I believe...
Do you have to have a motion?
Roger. I don't know how hard and fast that, we were able to get it into your packet of materials and it's...
I have no problem if we include this tonight.
If I was handing it to you, you know, right now, maybe that was an issue that we were able to get...
No.
I'll move to suspend the rules and just petition forward even though the town hasn't done it yet.
A second? A second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we've suspended the rules, and we'll act on this petition if I can please have a motion.
Does the county hearing move to approve?
A second? Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we're on 79... 11379, Watts Family Trust. Aye.
My name is Kyle Lane. My father and I are currently working on a new subdivision in the town of Middleton. I'm here tonight to petition the rezon for the parcel located at 7701 Mineral Point Road, formerly known as the Tobinown Trails Golf Course. Our intention is to rezon this property in order to create a new golf course community. There's gonna be 82 single-family residential lots intertwined through a 13-hole park for a golf course. Part of the new development will encompass a brand-new full-service clubhouse, dedicated pickleball courts, tennis courts, a swimming pool, and as well as a fitness center. We are currently working with the city of Madison to extend the sewer service, which is located right across the street at Pioneer Road. What I can tell you is our discussions have gone well. We actually have a meeting again tomorrow with the head city engineer and the assistant city engineer. We're hoping to kind of knock out some final logistics in order to get this thing done. One thing to note is that these lot owners would require a private well. But again, our hope is to extend that sanitary sewer. As a development team, we've been working closely with the certified floodplain manager to address stormwater issues. What we're gonna do throughout this development is a combination of detention ponds, infiltration basins, and a lot of drainage swales.
Anything else?
No, I'll do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? Okay, Majid?
The town has approved this petition. However, as noted in their action report and in the staff report, the proposal is not currently consistent with the town plan. In fact, they're in the process of mending their town plan. My understanding is it's been in discussion for, I want to say over a year. I could be wrong about that, but...
Can I comment, or no? It was, to further Mr. Majid's point, it was almost forgotten, if you will. So the town's almost kind of playing catch-up. So simultaneously, that's why we're asking for this rezon, so...
Okay.
So we informed them that, you know, having a proposal that's consistent with the plan is an important thing. You know, we understand that they've had their plate full with the zoning ordinance updates, turnover and staff at the town level and so on. So at any rate, we're recommending that it be postponed. We've conveyed this to the applicant. You know, they're in these discussions with the city about extending the sewer. We've got the plan amendment. In fact, it's on my things to do to coordinate with Supervisor Peters about introducing an ordinance amendment, accepting their plan amendment. Once that's done, I believe, did they meet last week or the township on the plan amendment? At any rate, all these things are in motion, and we anticipate that it'll be the March meeting before it's back before you. But again, this, obviously, we want things to happen in the procedure that they should. And so we're recommending postponement, although, like I said, we do have the town pool. I know the town has a fair number of conditions they're looking at.
Correct.
So it's conceivable that they may resubmit their action report with that list of conditions tying it to the rezon. But we'll see, they'll have to handle some of those things through their subdivision process.
Kyle, do you understand what's happening here?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we met with the town last week, or two weeks ago, I believe. And Mr. Allen had asked if, you know, if there's any opposition, because that's when we had our public hearing at the town level. There was none at that time, and the town knows that, you know, this is a little bit unique, that it's happening at the same time. But obviously, we gotta take the right steps here, and obviously, we wanted to make an appearance, and put this in front of you guys.
Very good. Are the committee members having questions, or do they understand? Go ahead. Supervisor, what?
I don't know, just clarify. Our motion to postpone to the first meeting in March and when it would be set for another public hearing, that's the recommendation?
Well, the recommendation, normally, we wouldn't put it on the agenda again until, in this case, the plan amendment had been adopted, which, as it stands, in terms of the sequence we're required to put out a 30-day notice, we're looking at March 26th for a public hearing for the CLR to see the plan amendment, which is essentially an amendment to their future land use map, which currently identifies the property as, you know, recreation because of the golf course. And they'll change it to a residential or mixed use.
Which is just because of the combination, there is single-family lots as well, but there will be a full-service clubhouse out there.
So the earliest that we would recommend it be placed on the agenda would be at that meeting on the 26th. I know they were anxious to get the approvals, to meet their various timelines and so on. So again, the earliest I would least recommend is the 26th. And you'd be looking at both the plan amendment and the zoning change, which is unusual, but it has been done before, where if we know we've got things, you know, the plan amendment is recommended for adoption, assuming that's the action that's taken, then you would have the option of taking action on the zoning petition as well.
Understand? Should we go? Supervisor Peters?
Just, we should discuss this kind of, only from the current sense, so I can talk a little more about the petition and kind of the way to do as far as the rezon, need to figure that out. And I remember that, sorry, the, I'm sorry, the branch is not working, is it? I mean, it's the ordinance amendment. But I'm happy to see that there's some acknowledgement of the drainage issues.
Absolutely.
I've gotten quite a few folks talking about how it backs up through there, so it's nice to see that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's one of the, one of the major, biggest town concerns. And obviously, you know, that we're gonna need approvals from the town, county, as well as the DNR. So that's, that's a major focal point of this development. You know, the, we're getting the lots more or less in place, and obviously, with the five hundred year elevations, storm elevations, hundred-year with roads, and the sewer kind of throws a little bit of a interesting piece into it. But that's why, you know, we're talking to the engineer, head engineer tomorrow, and the assistant engineer, and that's kind of their forte, so it's all in the works.
Perfect.
And I guess also, it's kind of a recovery, you're comfortable with the timeline we have to have in place here. It's not...
Yes, sir. Yep, yep.
Not the content tomorrow, just something about...
And Mr. Allen's been great to work with, and it's kind of what it is at this point.
Thanks. Any further questions or discussion? Supervisor, what?
Oh, I just would say that it, you know, it's important that the public and the knows that we make decisions here based on evidence presented to us at these meetings, and nothing else like that.
Okay. Thank you, good point. Anything else? I guess at this time I entertain a motion for postponement.
So what?
And a second, please? And a second? Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Kyle. We'll see you again.
Sounds good.
I'll move on to rezon number 11380, Windsor Quarry. Which was...
This is yet another...
Another one that...
So this is an interesting petition. It's essentially a farmland preservation plan compliance issue. The property in question here, of Byless Hope Road in the town of Cottage Grove, was identified in a plan amendment, a recent plan amendment from the town of Cottage Grove, as a neighborhood development area or TDR receiving area, where higher density development could be allowed in the future if and when development rights are acquired from a sending area and transferred into this property. Because it's now slated for higher density development, it no longer is identified as a farmland preservation area, and therefore, we need to take it out of ag preservation zoning. And so the proposal is to put it into the A3 ag transition category, which is essentially same limitations as the ag exclusive, but it's not a certified, state-certified farmland preservation district. So it's sort of a housekeeping issue, so to speak. And I spoke to the town chairman, who was going to attend the meeting, again, very thankful not to have to do so. As I said, this is sort of a housekeeping measure. We did have, and I believe you have in your packets, a letter from city planning stating some opposition and concerns to the identification of this area for higher density development because it's in the future growth area of the city. My understanding is that the city and town have been in at least beginning discussions on possible, you know, accommodation in some form or fashion. you know, accommodation in some form or fashion. But again, at this time, this rezoning will not allow for any additional development. Again, it's simply to meet the state, uh, requirements that any land that's not in farmland preservation, uh, for planning purposes, cannot have that farmland preservation zone.
Very good. Um, is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? If not, uh, it would entertain a motion at this time.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have, uh, rezone petition number one-one-three-eight-one, Chris Hendrickson. And, uh, Chris obviously isn't here also. How are you, Chris?
Yes.
Oh, very good, sit down, sorry.
Oh, no worries.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you guys doing?
Good, good. Okay, Chris, why don't you, uh, give us some information regard, regarding your petition?
Sure. Uh, what we're doing is our, if you can look on the map here, the current little triangle in the upper northeastern, uh, portion there is, um, where our current business is, and we're trying to expand it sort of into the back area, mostly due to the fact that we've outgrown our existing location several years ago. Uh, but we just purchased the property in twenty-seventeen, and have been sort of, uh, positioning ourselves to be able to do this type of, uh, transition to a larger facility. Uh, it takes care of a lot of the issues that we've had with parking, um, existing retail space, shrub area, sort of the whole nine yards. One of the biggest issues for us is the safety of our customers. Our existing parking lot for majority of the year is okay, but we do the bulk of our business in May and into early June, and for those six weeks, it's just terribly insufficient, uh, to the point where it raises some safety concerns for us, quite frankly. Um, so, it's kinda spelled out there, but that's sort of our plan, to keep it back away from Mineral Point Road a little bit, uh, allow adequate parking, adequate retail space, and just generally improve the overall customer experience and flow, et cetera.
Very good. Anything else?
Uh, it, as of right now, I think it's a sort of more of a postponement issue. We're kinda here tonight to sort of see if there's anybody... Uh, we have one neighbor, um, who is in sort of that, uh, boarding picture by the existing waterway thing there, and I've spoken with him, he had some concerns about, um, sort of after we vacate our existing location, what could possibly go into that spot. Um, and so I spoke with him today, actually, about erecting a fence, if there's any sort of building that goes into there, and with some deed restrictions at the county or the, uh, city, Town of Middleton, I should say, uh, Planning Commission has for us, that I think those will, from what he said today anyways, um, seems to take care of all his concerns.
Very good. Uh, did you fill out one of these forms to speak?
No, no.
Before you leave, would you fill, they're at the table back there. Pam Andrews was on when you leave, but...
My apologies.
Oh, no problem, no problem. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Okay, go ahead, McGee.
Uh, the, we do not have town action on this, uh, petition. Um, interestingly, or coincidentally, this property is also, uh, it's adjacent to the Tumble Down Golf Course. And they've also got a, a situation in which the proposal is not technically consistent with the currently adopted town plan. The town is, again, working on another amendment addressing that issue. Uh, really what it boils down to is they've only shown the portion that's currently zoned commercial as future commercial in their plan. Uh, so they're looking to revise that and, and look at the entire parcel as commercial. Uh, so, applicants aware of that, town's working on the amendment. I anticipate that will also be before you at the March twenty-sixth meeting. So you'll have an ordinance amendment that includes both of these, uh, plan updates or amendments from the township. And we'll see if they've got, they're also working on a conditional use permit application, uh, I believe, to cover outdoor storage.
The outdoor shrub, uh, display area is, needs a conditional use permit.
Right. So, um, again, this is a work in progress, so to speak. We are aware, we did have a letter, and I believe that's in your, uh, materials from the neighbor, uh, but we are aware that they've been discussing that, they've been, you know, so... Everybody's been in communication about the issues, and trying to come up with, uh, some ways to mitigate the concerns, as, as Chris indicated.
So do you folks have any questions or concerns at this time?
No, not really.
Okay. How about the committee? You understand what's going on here?
Okay.
Very good. Um, at this time, then I entertain a motion for postponement. And a second, got a motion and a second? Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll move on to, uh... And thanks, Chris, we'll see you again.
Yeah, for sure.
Uh, we'll move on to the CUPs now. Uh, I'll remind everyone again that action on the CUPs tonight is final action, and they won't go to the county board, so, uh, just wanted to put that reminder out there one more time. Move on to CUP number two-four-four-seven, Fosside Farm. And I don't have a...
Yes, this is another one. Again, this gentleman contacted us about, and I'm happy to come to the meeting. Uh, and, uh, the proposal is to, uh, operate a limited family business on the existing, uh, residential property that's on Ag Two, uh, for, uh, roasting of wholesale coffee and, uh, allowing sanitary fixtures in the accessory building that that will be conducted in, uh, as well as, I believe, jams and jellies. So sort of small-scale, uh, operation there. And, um, I don't know if there's anyone here to speak in opposition, but, uh...
If I don't...
It's unlikely. Uh, the town has recommended approval. Uh, staff has a, a list of conditions, which, uh, for your information, is based largely on, uh, as we're transitioning to the new ordinance, we have a lot of conditions that will apply to conditional use permits baked into the new ordinance. And so we're sort of trying those out in some of these, uh, petition. Spoke to the applicant this afternoon, he's fine with the, uh, conditions, uh, as written in the staff report, and, uh... That's about all I have for you.
Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Hearing none? I'd ask for a motion on this petition. And I'll remind you that there are twelve conditions that I saw granted.
What's your approval? On twelve conditions?
A second? And, uh... Go ahead with your Supervisor White.
Thank you. Um, are all of the conditions ones that in the new, um, code are kind of form conditions? Or is there anything specific to this particular...
Uh, no, these are by and large, you know, the formulaic conditions that you see in the, in the new ordinance.
Hour of operation.
Well, hours of operation, it's, the way we have it in the ordinance is, I mean, they'll be tailored to specific uses. In this case, they requested, you know, they said their hours would be nine AM to five PM. We had no objection from the applicant or the town on that, so we're simply carrying that forward in the recommendation. But yeah, generally speaking, everything you see there is, is essentially what we have now baked into the ordinance.
Got a motion and a second, correct?
Yes.
Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, the CUP is approved. I'll move on to CUP twenty-four forty-eight, Lucy Art.
Again, uh, this is one, uh, where, again, the applicant, uh, expressed their appreciation for not having, uh, to make the trek in and to, to represent on this proposal. Uh, this, again, is for a conditional use permit for a limited family business, uh, on a, on an existing Ag Two-zoned area of the property. Uh, this person is a glass artisan and, uh, would like to, uh, you know, operate her, her studio out of the existing accessory building. She's planning to have, uh, say, one or two events during the year where folks can come in, learn about, you know, glass making, uh, but she would have no employees. And, uh, we have, I believe... Make sure that we've got, yeah, so we've, we've got two town conditions and two staff conditions. They're all together in the staff recommendation for, for conditions of approval, which she was, uh, fine with when I spoke with her this afternoon.
Okay. Uh, is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? Hearing none, I would ask for a, uh, motion from the committee.
Second.
With the four conditions? Okay. Thank you very much. Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, we'll move on, uh, I talked before, and everybody seemed to be okay with me, uh, going on to the, uh, the zoning map amendments from previous meetings. We only have one. It's rezone number one-one-three-six-seven, Catherine Spring. And I don't believe there's anyone here representing Catherine Spring, is there?
I reached out to the applicant, being that this is not a public hearing item, uh, it's not customary for the applicant or their agent to attend. Um, and I apologize, it'll probably take me longer to fumble around, glean this up on the screen. This is really, again, a, a lot-line adjustment between two existing properties. No new development would result. Uh, I believe it had only been postponed because we've been awaiting town action. Uh, you probably know this better than I, since I don't have it on the screen in front of me, but I don't believe there are any recommended conditions.
No, there aren't.
Is this one of the town approved?
I don't... Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? Hearing none? Could I please have a motion?
Second.
Thank you. And, uh, we got a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And that is approved. So, um, I wanna thank the folks, I assume everyone left is reali- is here to speak regarding the Oak Park Quarry. And I wanna thank you for letting us just jump on a little bit. Uh, before we start, would anyone, I could take a five-minute recess here if you wanna use the restroom or anything like that. Okay? We'll jump right in. The procedure here, again, is the, uh, the petitioner will, will have, uh, five minutes to speak and present your case. And then, uh, we'll take, uh, deposition from the, uh, from the opposition at that time, after that. So, I would call... If I get it up here? Okay. Folks from Oak Park Quarry. Good evening.
How are you?
Are we ready?
Yep.
Ready? All right. Thank you. Uh, my name is Jeff Hursepp. Uh, we are asking for approval on CUP twenty-four forty-nine at thirty-five-twenty-two Oak Park Road in the town of Deerfield. The CUP is part of our hundred-and-eighty-acre farm and will replace current CUP twenty-one oh-three that expires next month. This limestone quarry has been operational for several decades and is part of the town's comprehensive plan. It includes twenty-five-point-six acres of high-quality dolomite limestone. The area is approximately sixty to seventy percent extracted to a depth of nine-hundred-and-ten feet. The new CUP will cover the same area as the existing CUP plus fifteen-point-six acres to the north of the existing quarry and three-and-a-half acres, uh, to the south for a future driveway. With additional acres to the north of the quarry, it will move extraction farther away from the church to a distance of two-thousand feet. Because of setbacks, we will only be able to use, uh, or mine ten-point-four acres of that additional acreage. Uh, we will move north incrementally to preserve farmland. Lots of thought and hard work has gone into this application. We've listened to concerns that have been brought up at several town board meetings. Groundwater. We have consulted with the Wisconsin DNR. We have in, we have put into place a spill prevention plan, a storm water prevention plan, and we will be doing pre-blast well and water inspections, and we will put into place a clean fill material program for fill materials coming into the quarry to be used for reclamation. We had a property value assessment done by, uh, S. Scott here, SNL McWilliams Company, who is a certified general appraiser. Blasting is the biggest concern of this whole application, and so we are looking at the future, and we've put together a solid plan. We have hired a professional engineer, and we will be using a new blaster. An experienced blaster who has worked in restrictive situations before, with the experience, knowledge, and resources to develop a blast design for our location. We are looking forward to working with the church to evaluate the structure and manage any risk associated with blasting. The biggest change is to the, is the town of Deerfield has lowered its blasting limits to protect the church and neighbors. Limits that are far more restrictive than the state of Wisconsin. We have put into place a blasting best management program, which outlines blasting protocol and response procedures, and includes procedures for stopping traffic on Oak Park Road, uh, for a short period of time, typically three or five minutes, uh, during the actual blast, um, to ensure public safety.
Jeff, could I interrupt you for a second? This won't count against your time. Would you be able to move that over so the audience can see your materials also? I assume you folks out there would like to see this information. Okay. Very good, thank you. Go ahead, Jeff.
Okay. Um, to, uh, a community response program that will allow for documentation and timely investigation for blast-related concerns at the quarry. While blasting is a very important aspect of our quarry's operations, it is not the only aspect. We need the CUP permit to stay open, to continue selling the gravel and fill that is already processed, along with the ability to recycle asphalt and concrete. The, an approved CUP, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, we also need the CUP to continue, uh, receiving clean fill for reclamation. An approved CUP in the town of Deerfield doesn't mean, uh, we can blast. Any blasting that would be done at our quarry requires a CUP approved by Dean County, an approved annual non-metallic mining permit issued from the town of Deerfield, which we actually did get last night, uh, an approved annual blasting permit issued from the town of Deerfield that we would apply for upon, uh, approval of the CUP. We have put into place health, safety, and environmental protections, and we are committed to addressing concerns. Uh, our quarry is and will be fenced and have a locking gate. No chemicals are used in the processing of our limestone. We have a fugitive dust control plan and an erosion control plan in place. Our quarry is regularly inspected by Mine Safety and Health Administration, uh, MSHA. Uh, the site is designed to minimize the impact to the people and community and to maintain the agricultural nature of the area with berms, planting of trees, and continued planting of roll crops on all available land not being directly mined. The new driveway, if supported, will minimize the amount of township road used and also move truck traffic further away from the church. We will use, we will also implement a truck-forward route to minimize the amount of truck backup alarms, um, and surrounding...
Fifteen seconds left, Jeff.
Pardon?
Fifteen seconds.
Uh, surrounding berms and lower elevation to process, uh, processing... Sorry, I'm gonna skip right there. Um, we thank you for your time and consideration in review of our CUP application and supplement. Uh, a supplement and application that contains factual information and reports that have been completed and/or reviewed by over fifty professionals and regulatory experts. Thank you.
Uh, anybody have any questions for, for him? Next, we have, uh... Rachel Halverson.
Rachel Halverson, fourteen-hundred Ramsey Road, Stoughton, and I am the owner of Oak Park Quarry. And a couple of facts, the town of Deerfield has more than forty-five miles of roadway and just one commercial quarry. In addition, I provide real wages for more than forty-five local families. On December twenty-sixth, we mailed out a letter to some of our customers, contractors, employees, owner-operators, and suppliers, asking them to show their support by mailing back a postcard to the town of Deerfield and Dean County. Our people have spoken, we do matter. We do matter. The county has received over 192 postcards in support of the Oak Park Quarry. Here are some of the comments that were pulled off of the support cards. One, they provide us gravel as we service customers in the Deerfield area. It helps us keep costs down for the residential services we offer in this area. Two, this will be my 21st year with Halversons. Three, our family has lived in the area for over 100 years. Family is buried at St. Paul's Liberty Cemetery. Never had any problems with our headstones. We need this quarry to be open. Farmers need egg lime for here. Any questions, you can call. It is getting difficult to obtain crushed stone in the Dane County area. We strongly agree that there is a need for this material and that an existing quarry is the obvious solution. Five, why would one or two quarries flourish and Oak Park be held to a different set of standards for operation? Six, this location is critical to our work. Seven, this quarry is a valued asset to the area. With me going there to get materials, I am also buying diesel, food, and maintenance supplies in the local area. Eight, economic growth requires aggregate material. This is not a new quarry, but rather an established entity that we depend upon to perform our work. Nine, we need easy close access to stone. Ten, the shortage of natural resources from limestone will affect everyone as long as pits and quarries are meeting their expectations and requirements. Permitting should be allowed. Eleven, Oak Park Quarry is strategically located in Dane County. This helps to reduce trucking costs for local, county, and state road projects. Twelve, good company who provides a great product. And thirteen, my job depends on this staying open. In addition, I'd like to read a letter that was sent to us from the Aggregate Producers of Wisconsin. January 14th, 2019. Dear Town Board members, my name is Aaron Wong Meyer, and I am Executive Director of the Aggregate Producers of Wisconsin, APW. Our organization is a nonprofit statewide trade association dedicated to the concerns of crushed stone, sand, and gravel producers, and to businesses that provide goods and services to the aggregate industry. Aggregates are vital to the economy but are unique in that they are not available in all locations. Aggregates are a resource that cannot be manufactured, only mined. The reality of this require that mining occur where the material is available. This is actually good news for your community. It is a fact that most aggregates, over 90%, are produced within 50 miles of where they are used. Your quarry, your community quarries are building your community. Second, because the vast majority of aggregates are used in close proximity to the job site, it is imperative to keep these quarry sites operational. The number of readily available aggregate suppliers is dwindling. To not use one of these sites will greatly increase cost to your community's roads, bridges, and other public work projects. A major cost driver in public transportation projects is trucking. If local permitting issues cause an aggregate site to go offline, the product must be trucked in from alternative sites. APW estimates that in some instances, even a 10-mile increase in trucking can increase a local public transportation project by over 17%. Finally, quarries also sustain dozens of good, family-supporting jobs in your area. Rocks build Wisconsin. APW works to educate the public about the importance of our industry and is an advocate for public policies that protect and expand the safe, environmentally responsible use of aggregates that build Wisconsin's infrastructure and economy. Thank you for your time and consideration of our contacts. Please contact me if you have any questions. Sincerely, Aaron Wong Meyer, APW, Executive Director.
Very good, you've got five seconds, so... You've timed it just perfectly.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
No, thank you. Next, we have Jody White.
Good evening. Thank you for being here tonight. My name is Jody White, and I have been employed by the Halversons for over 10 years. John was very passionate about his businesses and genuinely cared for his employees, family, friends, customers, and vendors. I can't tell you the amount of times he would take on a project knowing that he wasn't going to make money, but rather maybe break even at best. He did it in order to keep his drivers busy during the sore times, knowing that it was better for his employees to be working and making money than be at home for that day, week, or month not getting a paycheck. Rachel has taken on a tremendous amount with the unfortunate circumstances surrounding John's passing about a year and a half ago. I have to say that she has done a fantastic job with putting... Excuse me. With working with all of us, helping to fit the missing pieces into the puzzle. We have many employees and owner-operators that have been with them for five, 10, 20-plus years. This is a tremendous accomplishment and it proves that they are great people to work for. I wanted to touch on a few items in regards to the Oak Park Quarry's CUP application and hopefully its approval in the near future. I have been involved in this from the beginning when the quarry was purchased in the fall of 2010 and more involved the last several years. As you are aware, a quarry is situated in its location where it was put by nature. You can't pick it up and relocate it to a place in the middle of nowhere, far away from this or that. If this could be done, there would be a need for this meeting as there wouldn't be any opposition to it. However, since this is not the case, I believe there are a few things that need to be said. I have listened to many opposers of the quarry, and I would like to touch on a few things. When people are talking about the quality of life, enjoyment of property, and how they can't enjoy their property any longer, it makes me sad to think that these people who have built or purchased a home knowing that there was a quarry there can make statements that they can no longer enjoy their property. They built or purchased an existing home knowing that there was a quarry there, no matter if it was in operating or not, or at the time that they were told. It is still prior... It is still there prior to them building or their purchase. It is my understanding that a blast lasts between one and three seconds. Most won't even know that the blast had occurred, but because of our pre-blasting notification list, I believe this makes it more noticeable as they are anticipating that it is going to happen. A few years back, the ZLR Committee and Town of Deerfield Board members were invited to the Oak Park Quarry to witness the blast. One of the attendees asked when the blast was going to occur, and they were told that it had already happened. However, the CUP application isn't about blasting. It is about Forever Sandfill and Limestone Incorporated being able to continue on with their business. This is about replacing the existing CUP 2103 set to expire in March of 2019 with a new CUP. Without this, we can't continue to remove product that has been processed. We can't recycle concrete and asphalt or continue to process material. This property has had multiple CUPs issued and is at this rate for 38 years or more. You have received our CUP application, and you should have also received an additional supplement to the application which focuses on the answers to questions, concerns that may have brought up by... Excuse me. That may have been brought up by others. This supplement includes many items that have been completed by professionals to help address the items that keep recirculating. I know you know that there are many quarries in Dane County. However, not all of these quarries have certified grade gravel that can be used on highway, interstate, bridge, road projects, and other construction projects. Road construction in Dane County is nowhere near being complete, and there are many projects that will be coming up for bid. This affects everyone in southern Wisconsin. Companies have to bid work that takes longer to try to get material. This will drastically change pricing on getting projects completed and will raise taxes in order to complete the corridors into and out of Dane County and southern Wisconsin. More time equals more cost. And when you're talking big dollar construction jobs, a 10-, 15-minute difference per trip can cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. I hope that you all take the facts into consideration when you vote on whether or not to approve the CUP for Oak Park Quarry. Thank you for your time and consideration to approve the CUP.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Susan...
Mr. Chair, in order. I thought it was committee rule or custom, at least, to alternate between supporters and opponents?
Not really.
Is that not correct?
No.
Oh, okay. I might be thinking of the...
Take the supporters first and then we take the opposition. And then the supporters have five minutes for rebuttal at the end. Okay, next we have Jody White.
Oh, I just went.
Oh, sorry. Next, we have Susan Quirt.
That wouldn't be...
Okay.
And I'm gonna come over there and sit down there, Jeff. I just wanna... I did bring a few boards today, and just so I can point them out, because I'll have enough time to go through my comments. Was primarily just what I understand on the blasting over time. And this quarry, you know, began in the 70s. So, from 1970 through 2015, was it? 2015. They were blasting at the 2.0, the state safety standards. Because this is pretty complicated, I wanted you to know what the difference was. So, the town... The city of Franklin has a lower limit for the homes in close proximity to them. The town of Dunn has one as well. And this is the town of Deerfield now with their new ordinance that they adopted in 2015 and then again with the revisions in 2016. I put that in your packet, you know, but I wanted to explain that simply. And also in your packet would be just a little more detail of what was in the supplement of the differences between these same blasting ordinances. I don't expect you to look at them today. But just that from, you know, much many more years, we were blasting from this location to 2015, and it was a lot different. So, with that, just that perspective, I think I want to just give you my comments. And I have a few more boards that we copies of that can go into your packet. So, this is interesting to me. My name is Susan Quirt. I'm a geologist, and I work on controversial land whose projects primarily, you know, exploration and development of non-metallic mining over time. And I was very... I was actually introduced by a mutual friend to Rachel about a year ago to help her sort out, you know, what it means to have a non-metallic mine, what are the rules, what do we need to do, and to suggest as well. So, I'm a con... I've been doing this since 1989, and I'm accustomed to controversy, but I was very curious as to what would, you know, create such a conversation around this small rural quarry. So, rural quarries are in general operated upon demand. So, when a big road project comes through, you're gonna see a peak, a little blasting, and then it goes away. They'll have other than that local delivery. So, this is a small-town rural quarry. So, with this interest, you know, I had a lot of questions. And thankfully, there was a lot of resources. The town has a lot of their town meetings videotaped. The church has a lot of information on their website. And according to Rachel, it was purchased in 2015, and it was welcome at the time because the property owner, Dennis Mant, who had been operating the quarry, was getting older and not wanting to, you know, keep leasing it for mineral extraction. And so, Rachel and her husband and John purchased it, and Dolores, his wife, and Dennis Mant lived there as long as they liked, rent-free. So, in walking into this, I assumed that the neighbors understood the blasting. They've seen this, you know, work from time to time when there was a big project, whether it was the industrial park or if it was 12 and 18. So, what changed, you know, around 2015? Well, I don't know. I'm just kind of, you know, looking back, but it looked like there was a big project coming on. There was a big reconstruction of 12 and 18 and Highway 73. There was new neighbors that came in that area at the time. The new pastor. I don't know what, you know, changed, but maybe all of these factors influenced it because the quarry had been operating, like I said, since the 70s in the same fashion. I actually looked further and watched the videos of the different town meetings, and I could see how a fear of blasting changed in January of 2016. Oh, gosh, I can't believe that. It changed from blasting of a fear of blasting to claims of blasting, beginning with the Cemetery Association's declaration that blasting damaged 45 monuments. And Roxanne Ingleson brought this up at the town meeting, this public hearing this last month. What I wanted to say about that is, as of today, February 12th, three years after this alleged damage, there has been... And the operator is fully insured. There has been no investigation or claim for the insured, the Forever Sandfill and Limestone has with the town of Deerfield a certificate of insurance. Any claim documenting such damage, not from the church or anyone else claiming damage. But they are wholly insured, and I think that's probably my biggest point that is still a curiosity to me. We don't argue that people feel blasting, but what we're hoping for in this whole process at this time is for an accurate, value-neutral, scientifically-based information.
Susan, your time is up.
Thank you.
Can wrap it up real quick?
Oh, no. I mean, you have a lot in your packet. I don't want to carry it.
Right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Jeff Cruminar.
Hello. I'm Jeff Cruminar. I live at 1819 Skyline Drive in Stoughton, Wisconsin. I've known forever John Rachel Forever Sandfill and Limestone for almost 20 years. Known him to be a responsible business partner in the community. I work at a truck dealer, and we've worked with them over the years and other companies that haul for them or, you know, get products from their quarry. And the concerns that I've heard over the years from different companies... And it wasn't just this project alone. There's other quarries and companies that I deal with in Dane County and other counties that talk about the shortage and having to haul. And the concerns that I hear from the companies that do that is the shortage of trucks that we have in the market out there now. There's restrictions right now, and we can't build enough trucks fast enough for those companies to get... We're already... And this isn't just our company. This is every large plastic manufacturer now. So, there's... The production is sold out for 2019. We're... We can't deliver a truck right now if we ordered it until probably August or September. The other part of this that goes with the shortage of drivers, CDLs. I don't know if you guys are aware, there's new regulations that govern what hours can be operated in certain applications, and that leads to restrictions which increase costs. If they have to haul further to go to a different place, bring the materials in, their cost of operating the truck, the fuel, the drivers, the maintenance that go with it all increase, which are going to lead to higher cost on road building projects. And in our industry, in order to attract the technicians that repair the trucks, we've had to increase our labor rates substantially to do that, which are being passed on to the truck owners and operators, and that increases the cost. So, I think when they're talking about increases that are out there, that's based on traditional right now in the market that we have, I think it's gonna drive it even further. Some of the other concerns that I have is as a local taxpayer, if these costs, if we do not renew the CUP for this quarry, is it's gonna affect me personally. We have road projects in township where I live that we're looking at, and it's gonna affect bottom line. So, that's... Those are my concerns with this. And, you know, I think that they've done a good job to work with the township and the county and to try and meet and mitigate these problems. And what I've known from them over the years is they will work to do this and meet their requirements. So, I ask that you renew the CUP so that they can continue operation and get their aggregate, get out of the pit that's already crushed and continue to blast. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeff. Next speaking in support is Kylie Nelson. Hi, Kylie.
My name is Kylie Nelson. I live at 1083 County Highway B in Cambridge. And I am going to read a letter that Forever Sandfill and Limestone has sent to St. Paul Liberty Lutheran Church dated April 25th, 2016. And although it is from 2016, we believe that the information in the letter is still relevant today. Dear Pastor, Church Council, and Cemetery Association, I am writing to ask that we find a way to work together to resolve concerns related to the church and the quarry activities. I think it is safe to say that we both have frustrations with how things have gone and where they currently are, and I truly hope we can set aside our reservations and meet with open minds to try and find a resolution. The church serves a very important role in the community, as does the quarry, providing needed... The church serves a very important role in the community, as does the quarry, providing needed materials, numerous jobs, and economic support. Therefore, I believe that this matter goes beyond the reach of the regulatory agencies, including the town board and the Dane County ZLR committee. And that is- that it is imperative that we work together to find a solution and a way to coexist together in peace. I continue to believe that the best approach to addressing these concerns is to rely on experts in the field of structural engineering and blasting activities. Roxanne Ingelston's credentials and her background is neither structural engineering nor in blasting impacts. We must rely on sound science and expertise to ensure that discussions and decisions are based on reliable experience and scientific information. This is why I have tried to not get involved in discussions about whether or not the quarry blasting is causing impacts at the church, as I am not an expert in this field. I continue to believe that relying on experts is the best approach and strongly encourage that we provide an opportunity for the experts to view the church and discuss concerns. My offer to pay for these services still stands and I encourage you to consider this option. My perception, and your perception may be different, has been that the blame for conditions at the church has been based on the assumption that all incidents are directly caused by the quarry, whether or not the quarry is in operation. In my own experience at my personal church, we have had similar experiences with the church and graveyard, and the church is not located near a quarry. For example, the steep will have to be removed and rebuilt and headstones in the graveyard have shifted. These issues are similar to those described at your church, but are not in any way affected by the quarry activities at my church. Therefore, I think it is important that we discuss what is caused by the quarry and what is due to natural conditions affecting the church and graveyard. In the near future, Dane County will be forced to make a decision on whether or not to revoke the permit for the quarry. For years, the church's representatives have ascertained that the decided outcome was not to shut the quarry down, but to ensure protection for the church. Recently, that stance has changed, with church representatives testifying and registering in support of revoking the permit, essentially shutting the quarry down. Revoking the permit would be devastating for our employees and our business. The church's opposition is happening despite our efforts to secure your agreement on the best method of determining the necessary protective measures for the church. It's quite possible that protective measures agreeable to all parties could have been determined and implemented by now, but unfortunately, we have not been able to get your agreement to utilize experts for an assessment. I hope that you will consider meetings with us and agreeing to having these concerns assessed by professional or professionals that have a strong scientific background in structural engineering and blasting activity impacts. We believe that a science-based approach is the most reasonable and reliable approach. If we continue down our current path, relying on our non-expertise opinions, we will not come to a fact-based conclusion, which could be detrimental to both the church and my business and employees. We hope that we can all find a way to let go of past grievances and work together to find a solution that all parties can support. I was saddened to hear Pastor Holly say at the town board meeting that she felt she couldn't meet or talk with us without another person present. To be honest, we were starting to feel the same thing, especially after Roxanne recorded one of our meetings. I'm not sure what triggered this perception and I don't want our relationship to be like this. I hope we can learn to trust each other again. Ultimately, we are asking for an hour or two of your time to discuss the concerns at the church and graveyard, as well as what could be caused by the quarry activities versus impacts due to natural impacts from seasonal weather, humidity, and other changes. I believe we have an agreement on the need to protect the church, which is a good starting point for the conversation. Thank you, John Halverson Oak Park Quarry LLC.
Thank you Kylie.
Is that my time, or do I have?
You have forty-five seconds.
Perfect, that's just enough time. Um, as I said, I live in Cambridge and I'm not in the town of Deerfield. However, what happens at this quarry impacts me. My father has been an owner-operator through Halverson Logistics for over thirty years, one of their longstanding employees. Um, so not only does this affect my family, but it affects the other truck drivers and their families that not only operate through Halverson's, but who work for other trucking companies that do business with the quarry. Um, it's the construction workers that are working at night and get the materials. It's the people who do the maintenance on the truck, tires, the oil changes, um, such as Mr. Cuminor stated. And it's- what happens here sets a precedent for the entire industry, not just the Oak Park Quarry and the town of Deerfield. So, um, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, so.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you Kylie. Next we have Carrie Nelson.
Thank you. My name's Carrie Nelson and I live at twenty-one-oh-seven Utica Road in Cambridge. And I just have a synopsis. Imagine being a farmer who produces a high bulk, low commodity, low-cost commodity such as corn. Before he's allowed to plant, he or she must first get the okay from the neighbors and the town board. Then imagine several of the neighbors don't like the idea of plantings because, well, it may cause slow-moving vehicles and accidents on the road, not to mention the dust and noise from the tilling and harvesting. So the town turns down the application, causing the farmer to miss an entire season of planting. Now imagine this farmer coming back before the spring, before spring the next year, and the town board says, "Well, okay, if you pay us twenty-five-hundred dollars per year and assume the entire cost for the upgrade of the road that we need, we will get you approved. But first, you must only plant or harvest from eight to five, Monday through Friday, never on weekends. You must also guarantee that you won't plant or harvest unless the wind is blowing away from the neighbor with asthma, or not blowing at all. In addition, you are prohibited from using any herbicides. And just one more thing, you have to water the corn before harvest, just in case. The added cost for the road upgrade and the reduction in yield cut into the farmer's income. But because he has contracts with his customers, he obliges. This is his only work, and it's this work that has supported his family farm for decades. Not to mention, he has mouths to feed, a tractor to pay for. But he- so he goes ahead and plants corn and all goes well into the fall, when he waters the plants and begins harvesting as required. The water has caused tracking onto the road and the town board shut down his operation mid-harvest. What little income he might have had was lost due to the rotting corn on the stalk and the additional overhead cost for drying due to water prior- prior to harvesting. The next year, his customers went elsewhere because he was unable to fill his contracts. This all sounds like an impossible fiction, but it is happening in rural America every single day. Right now, in the town of Deerfield in Dane County, over a small quarry that has been operating safely in the same location for decades. Could it be that there is someone on the town board that serves to benefit from these shenanigans? How come other quarries aren't subject to these same "stop all work because I say so" requirements? Perhaps someone on the town board thought shutting down the quarry would lead to additional business for themselves. Maybe they thought they could get a few more concessions beyond the free road upgrade? Maybe tuck pointing the church, a couple of hundred-year-old barns repaired, or even a few wells that are in need of replacement? Aldo Leopold warns in a San County almanac, "There are two spiritual dangers in not owning a farm. One is the danger of supposing that breakfast comes from the grocery, and the other that heat comes from a furnace. We are disconnected from the ground that supports us, and we can talk all day long about environmental protection, food security, the high price of utilities, and affordable housing. But none of these are possible unless the people start supporting rural America, those working-class people who make it their life to make ours better every single day. You should be thanking the quarry folks that put a road under your car and a roof over your head, when what you are doing is trying to shut them down. Shame on you. Don't you even know these costs are passed on to the consumer? That's right, to you and me. Rural property owners, support other rural property owners. And it's about time the to- town of Deerfield starts to support the Oak Park Quarry. Thank you."
Thank you, Carrie. Uh, Jennifer Hansen.
I am here in support of the quarry.
Okay, yeah, okay, I see you registered in support.
She about wrapped it up before you.
Okay, thank you.
I- oh, I do have one little thing.
Go ahead Jennifer.
I was at the town of Deerfield meeting and, um, point after point after point about the CUP, permit went back to blasting. And I understood then that blasting is its own permit. Why was the CUP not approved that night? Every point they made, we agreed, we agreed, we re-agreed.
You were at the town meeting?
I was at Deerfield Town Meeting, yes.
Yeah, I can't speak to that.
No, right, but I'm just curious, is that it- it didn't happen? So is that typical, is?
I really can't answer that.
Okay.
I wasn't there.
Yeah, I was shocked. Blasting is its own permit, I know. Thank you.
Thank you Jennifer. Uh, Scott McWilliams.
Hi.
Are you ready yet?
Oh, yeah, I, uh, I'm- I'm ready. My name is Scott McWilliams. I'm a certified general crazer, Oregon, Wisconsin. I've been certified general crazer since nineteen eighty-seven. I do a lot of, uh, environmental issues, uh, do a lot of road projects, do a lot of work where there's controversy in regards to proximity. I've worked on, uh, siting of landfills. I've worked on conditional use, uh, being before this committee previously for the Cotell Quarry about eight months ago. Uh, and, uh, I was asked to take a look at the, um, the property value issue in regards to proximity to the quarry. Uh, resident- and- and- and I, uh, produced a written report, which was part of the packet. Uh, there's a statement of conclusions at the back of that report that kinda gave a scope of work of what I did. Uh, the- I- I examined, uh, first of all, the residential development, uh, in and around the- the quarry. Uh, normally, when you- when you take a look at impacts or negative market conditions, you'll see a, uh, a- a lessening of the development. And I, uh, identified in my report four properties that were constructed, uh, since, uh, uh, since two thousand and four. Uh, pretty nice houses in the immediate area within, uh, point-seven miles of the quarry. Uh, the second thing I did is, uh, I- I- I reiterated some of the, uh, some of the, uh, examination I did for the Cotell Quarry, uh, and, uh, in the town of Cottage Grove, which is about two miles from this particular quarry. I examined, uh, sales within a mile and a half radius of that to determine whether or not there was any evidence of protracted marketing times for properties. And I was also examined the price per square foot of sales that were proximate to the quarry. I- I identified eight of them. And then I also compared those sales to sales that were outside of the, well away from, uh, any quarry, uh, influence, uh, up to- uh, usually I- I put it at five miles away and I examined the price per square foot and the marketing times. And I found they were very similar. There was no discernible pattern of protracted marketing time, uh, or reduced sales prices in the area of the Cotell Quarry. I also recently did a, uh, examination of a frac sand mining oper- uh, uh, proposed operation in Wood County in the town of Brock. Uh, in that, uh, in that particular analysis, uh, which is also contained in my report, uh, I examined, uh, sales, uh, within a half-mile of the completion chemical frac sanding mine processing in Marshfield, uh, to, uh, that were located within a half-mile. And these were fairly new houses in a fairly new subdivision. I was able to find other sales that were similar outside the area, uh, outside of a mining influence area. And once again, uh, both the, uh, both the marketing time and the price per square foot remained consistent. I didn't see any discernible pattern of any negative influence as a result, uh, of proximity to the mining operation, which in the case of the completion analysis, was within a half-mile. And then lastly, I tried to take a look at what's happening around the Oak Park Quarry itself. Once again, I indicated there are four sales that I were able- or four new houses that were constructed since two thousand and four. This is kind of a difficult analysis because you're trying to determine the influence of a mine that's been in operation for forty years. It- this has been here for a long time. So the analysis has to take a look at, are still people- are- are they still building in the area? And there- and- and there are. There are- there are several homes, all within Ford, which I detailed in my report, within a mile of, uh, of the particular quarry that were built, where people decided to build, buy a site, and build. And that shows, uh, evidence of market activity that while some people may not want to be located next to, uh, next to a quarry, that doesn't mean that that applies to everybody. You have to take a look at a market from a- from an unbiased perspective. Now I also took a look at three sales that have occurred, three MLS sales, which are all also detailed. And I took a look once again at the parameters of marketing time, price per square foot. Is there, uh, evidence of a decrease in value as a result of the influence of the quarry, or is there a protracted marketing time? And in- in the three sales that I have that are summarized in the report, I didn't find any discernible pattern.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, oh, good, okay. Uh, and so, in conclusion, you have something that's been there for forty years. Whether or not, if the- if the question is, is it gonna impact to stay there, no more than it's impacted in the last forty years.
Thank you. And we have, uh, registered in support, uh, Bill, is it Roloff's?
Uh, that's me, but I'm just here representing the town of Deerfield and was not intending to speak.
Okay, how do you pronounce your last name?
Roloff.
Roloff, okay, thank you, Bill. All right, so Bill is, uh, again, registered in support.
No.
Okay.
No, I was just- 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 just information.
Available for information. And it does say that on here, I'm sorry. Yep, um, okay, before I move on to, uh, those of you that are registered in opposition, would we like a- a recess to use the facility? No? Okay.
Thank you.
And you'll have, uh, time for rebuttal afterwards.
Okay.
All right. First speaking in opposition, we have Ken.
Mister- Mister Chairman.
Yes.
When I spoke with you before the meeting, you said that you would just ask for people in opposition so we didn't put them in order, otherwise we would have. We do have an order, if that would be helpful, is that okay?
If you wanna just, uh, you would-
Do you want our- our order, would you?
Oh, you have it written down? Sure, I'll take it.
Thank you.
That's great, thank you. You seem to organize.
Okay, thank you.
Um, first of all, we have Cindy Regan, speaking in opposition. Hi Cindy.
Hello. Cindy Regan, thirty-nine-oh-two Oak Park Road, Deerfield, Wisconsin. Thank you for your time and attention tonight. Those of us representing Saint Paul's Liberty Lutheran Church and many nearby residents intend to provide substantial evidence supporting the denial of the conditional use permit to Forever Sandfill and Limestone requested by Oak Park Quarry LLC. Before providing that evidence, it is beneficial to look back at the values represented in the comprehensive plan established by the Deerfield Town Planning Commission on, uh, August seventh, two thousand and six, and assure that those values are an integral part of the decision regarding the CUP. In particular, I reference the cultural resource inventory stated in chapter two, section G, which I quote, "The history of the town of Deerfield is rich, varied, and occurs in many forms, such as archaeological sites, buildings, and historic landscapes. Land-use planning is a rare opportunity to identify, evaluate, and protect these priceless resources," end quote. Further, in the same document, section H, it states, "One of the objectives is to, quote, 'encourage the preservation of historically and architecturally significant structures,'" end quote. Clearly, Saint Paul's Liberty Lutheran Church and the Schuster's Round Barn are precisely two of those sites and buildings. Any threat to the preservation of the site is in direct opposition to that value and is unjustifiable. Additionally, our substantial evidence will address three of the six standards of a conditional use permit. Standard one, that the CUP will not be detrimental to or endanger public health, safety, comfort, or general welfare. Standard two, that the uses, values, and enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for the purposes already permitted shall be in no foreseeable manner substantially impaired or diminished by establishment, maintenance, or operation of the conditional use. And finally, standard three, that the establishment of the conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Our subsequent speakers will address our concerns in a clear and concise manner as they relate to Forever Sandfill and Limestone's ability to meet the standards of a conditional use permit. While there can be emotional and opinionated arguments on both sides, we ask that the issue be evaluated solely by the required substantial evidence provided by Forever Sandfill and Limestone to determine whether they have the ability to meet the requirements of Act sixty-seven. Likewise, we would ask that you evaluate the substantial evidence we will present that seeks to protect our church and the Brown Barn, architecturally significant structures in Deerfield Township, as well as protect all of the homeowners and businesses around the quarry. Your job is to weigh all of the evidence that is presented, which is a large task, but a very important task to the future of our township. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next we have Ken, uh, Frelick. Okay.
I pronounced it wrongly. I just got some things to pass out. My name is Ken Frelick. I'm at twelve-eighty-five Olstad Road, uh, town of Deerfield. I oppose the new cup because I believe it does have, has had an effect on property values in spite of what, uh, Mr. McWilliams has said. Many of people have said, "You bought near a quarry-" Many of people have said, you bought near a quarry, you should expect your property values to go down. It's a statement lacking in thought. Only if you buy property and then after the purchase, a quarry has started, should you expect your values to drop. If you buy near a quarry that has been present for decades, you would expect the decreased value to be baked into the price. So dropping values in the case of the Oak Park Quarry would not be expected unless something new happened after all those years of operation. In the case of the Oak Park Quarry, the something new has been new ownership since 2010 with markedly increased mining and blasting, blasting that has resulted in damage to local properties, and I believe dropping property values. The quarry hired Mr. McWilliams. He evaluated four sites near the quarry and concluded that prices have not changed. First site was a sand mine in Marshfield. Sand mines don't blast, so I think that's a very poor choice. The second were a number of homes near the Cattrall Quarry in Cottage Grove. More than half of those were new, one-owner homes built in 2016 and 2017, which means there's no history there. You don't know what's going to happen to those values down the road. The third was a group of three homes sold near the Oak Park Quarry. One sold at auction, so the numbers are questionable. The second sold at eight percent below appraisal, and the third is a home I'll speak to a little bit later. He also had a fourth group of three newer, one-owner homes near the quarry. Again, not enough data yet. The data looked at and the conclusions made, I believe, is questionable. It's difficult to prove dropping property values, especially in a rural community, because there are fewer homes and fewer sales. But in this case, I have evidence that it is occurring. In 2013, the owner of the third closest home to the Oak Park Quarry attended the open book meeting with the town of Deerfield Appraiser and asked for a lower assessment because of quarry blasting. It was granted and lowered by 6.6 percent. In 2014, he made the same request, and it was lowered by 5.7 percent. In 2014, the owner of the second closest home attended the open book, requested a lower assessment for the same reasons, and it was decreased by 10 percent. Tax assessors do not grant lower assessment requests without substantial evidence. The assessors did so with little resistance because they already knew that properties near the quarry were declining in value because of the intensity of the activities there. In 2018, the third closest home to the quarry was sold. Purchase price in 2010 was $334,000, and you have to remember, the quarry was inactive for almost two years at that time. It sold in December of 2018 for $300,000, ten percent, at a 10 percent loss when Dane County prices were increasing by over 10 percent. In 2011, another home, two-thirds of a mile from the quarry, sold at 12 percent below assessed evaluation, 14.6 percent below list and 6 percent below the total fair market value. In 2014, the same home sold at 4 percent below the assessed evaluation and 12 percent below list and 6 percent below total fair market value. The attachments that you have, five and six, show total fair market values for nine homes near the quarry from 2010 through 2012, showing a decline and a plateau through 2015. This matches the years of intense mining and blasting. Dropping values near quarries is not just a local problem. In 2006, Diane Height, economics professor at Auburn University, did a study on over 2,800 homes near a quarry in Delaware County, Ohio. She found that the closer a home was to the quarry, the greater the drop in value, and a half a mile was up to 20 percent. In 1955, in the case of Sablein Park Holdings versus Wieland, Wisconsin, Supreme Court held that the preservation of property values in a community is valid because it falls within the promotion of the general welfare. That ruling stands until today. Damaging property lowers the value and violates the general welfare. I believe the decreased assessments when requested, the house sales for major losses, and the drop in the total fair market values when the quarry was most active are substantial evidence that condition one was violated. And I believe it's up to the applicant to show that this will not continue with the new CUP, and that is why I'm against the new CUP. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Ken. Ken. Or Ken. Am I looking at the next one? I'm looking, yeah, Ken. Bill is next.
Good evening. My name is Bill Dobler. I live at 3759 Oak Park Road. I want to thank the committee for allowing us to have a full-time resident of the Oak Park Road, town of Deerfield, to present some fundamental information about the physical makeup of the Oak Park Quarry and how its operation impacts the first and second standards of a CUP. I've handed you a section of the latest bedrock geology map from the Wisconsin Geological Survey. This rock formation highlighted in green was formed over 400 million years ago and is termed to be Platteville dolomite. The very irregular shape of the formation stretches from the west edge of the village of Deerfield, seven miles, before ending in Section 32 of Cottage Grove Township. Why can't you see that formation? 15,000 years ago, the Green Bay lobe of the Wisconsin Glacier came floating down from the north and stopped in the same area of Dane County forming drumlins. The roller coaster ride on Oak Park Road is a result of what was left when the glacial ice melted. In the quarry area, the turning of the glacier formed drumlins that slid together and created the mile and a half long monster that is in the quarry area. A textbook drumlin is about 500 foot in length. Inside the drumlin is whatever the glacier picked up and was being carried in the ice. No two drumlins are the same, thus having, they've never been classified by rocks and soils. Oak Park Quarry, St. Paul's Liberty Lutheran Church, Schuster's Historic Round Barn, and a number of surrounding homes all sit on the targeted limestone. The newly installed Lion Energy Natural Gas Line along Oak Park Road and in front of St. Paul sits on and is embedded in the limestone. When any blasting at the quarry occurs, the dolomite acts much like the head of a snare drum, creating action throughout the entire slab and affecting the church, the barn, and nearby residences. The ground blast energy does not just stop at the edge of the dolomite, but continues into the surrounding sandstone and other materials hidden within the drumlin. On the northern slope along Nelson Lane, a layer of black granite is found. My 1880s home and late 1800s barns sit on that black granite layer and get bounced around with every quarry blast, even though I'm over a half mile from the quarry. Fifty years ago, my wife and I spent 18 months in Japan, and the quarry creates tremors equal to or greater than any earthquake we experience. Standard one, the operation of the Oak Park Quarry not detrimental or endangering comfort. Webster finds comfort as strengthening aid, assistance, plus consolation in time of trouble. They follow that it should be a feeling of encouragement, a contented well-being, and a satisfying or enjoyable experience. Oak Park Quarry LLC may be feeling those things, but nobody in my Oak Park neighborhood is sharing those qualities, in part because of the way the drumlins are part of the geography. Standard two, the quarry is not to alter uses, values, and enjoyment of other property. The damage or loss of historical buildings such as the 150-year-plus-old church that has had continuous operation for its entire history, or the only Round Barn in Dane County, cannot be put at risk. Any loss that could be described in volumes of testimony from church users and those who have memorable experiences at the Round Barn. The educational building houses church-supported activities, including post-funeral receptions, and is the town of Deerfield's voting place. Two 4-H clubs and a Boy Scout troop count on this location for their monthly meetings. The cemetery is the final resting place. The idea that a funeral or a family visit to a grave will now face a blasting schedule is unimaginable. Schuster's Round Barn is a historic site and so designated by the state. This 1903 architectural masterpiece hosts thousands of wide-eyed youngsters each fall, providing an unreplaceable educational environment that can't be duplicated in Dane County. This business offers employment for hundreds of young people who would not be able to gather experience elsewhere. A single blast at Oak Park Quarry LLC could end the barn's existence and Schuster's livelihood. There are other drumlins and other quarries, but not two that interact in such a destructive way. In summary, one blast at the Oak Park Quarry carries too much risk to others. Please do not issue this requested CUP. I want to thank you very much for your.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Beck.
My name is Michael Beck. I reside at 225 South Prairie Avenue in Deerfield, Wisconsin, and I've been a member of St. Paul's Liberty Lutheran Church for the past one year. The Oak Park Quarry is located along Oak Park Road. The quarry is less than a mile from the intersection of County Road W and US Highway 12 and 18. To aid in evaluation of the impact to quarry will present if the CUP application is renewed, a traffic count on Oak Park Road and US Highway 12 and 18 was taken this past December and January. On a typical morning, the following counts were observed on Oak Park Road. From 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM, there were 116 vehicles going northbound and 200 going southbound. The most highly traveled in both directions was from 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM, with 73 vehicles northbound and 120 vehicles southbound. Within this time period, school, two school buses went south and one went north. The majority of southbound vehicles, southbound vehicles on Oak Park turned west onto Highway 12 and 18, heading towards Madison. The majority of the northbound vehicles on Oak Park came from eastbound 12 and 18, which means they had to cross the path of the 1,000-plus cars and trucks going west toward Madison. On a typical morning, the following counts were observed on Highway 12 and 18. Westbound traffic only on 12 and 18 from 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM. There was a total of 1,626 vehicles with an average interval of 4.45 seconds. The most highly traveled times were from 6:30 AM to 7:30 AM, with a total of 875 vehicles with an average interval of 4.1 seconds. Our concern here is how a gravel truck will impact the traffic flow during the morning hours. Using data from the Journal of Transportation Engineering, one finds that from a dead stop, both empty and loaded gravel trucks are extremely slow to accelerate. For example, an empty truck weighs 35,000 pounds. It will take 15 to 20 seconds to reach less than 20 miles per hour. A fully loaded truck weighed in at 60,000 pounds will take 18 to 23 seconds to reach 10 to 18 miles per hour. The question is, how will trucks go in this slow, interacting car traffic that has less than a five-second space between them? Every truck coming from the west and from the south will have to cross the westbound lane with over 1,500 vehicles just in the early morning alone. That could cause traffic backups throughout the day with the quarry hours being 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. We do not want to have additional individuals injured at this busy intersection, let alone have a life lost. The gravel quarry to the west of Oak Park Road have access to the four-lane portion of US Highway 12 and 18. The one south of Cottage Grove utilizes the county road and interchange, allowing for downhill runs to the highway. Thus, in conclusion, 12 and 18 is a highly traveled road. It is a major artery into and out of Madison for many people on a daily basis. If loaded gravel trucks are turning onto the highway and taking 18 to 23 seconds to reach 10 to 18 miles per hour, how many accidents will that cause? And how far will the traffic be backed up? Standard one states that the operation of the proposed conditional use will not endanger the public health, safety, comfort, or general welfare. Has the quarry provided evidence to ensure that standard number one will be met? Thank you for your time, everybody, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Next, we have Teresa Schuster.
Hi, Teresa Schuster, 1326 US Highway 12 and 18, Deerfield.
That's the Round Barn, right?
That's the Round Barn, yes. I'm here today as part of the Deerfield Township community that has been adversely affected by the blasting and operation of Oak Park Quarry. My husband and I own Schuster's Farm, which is located approximately a half mile southwest of the quarry. We became part of this group speaking to you today because we have felt a blasting on our property. On three significant occasions, one of which was so physically alarming, we immediately called the town chairman. I would first like to speak to the first three standards of a CUP. Condition number one, safety and general welfare. Beyond the feeling of the blast, we have noted damage to several farm structures, one of which is our Centennial Round Barn, a significant architectural piece of agricultural history in Dane County. Our barn was completed in 1903, and in 2002, we began restoration. We did extensive tuck pointing of the barn foundation in 2010 and window sills in the spring of 2015. In the winter of 2015-16, we noted cracking in the tuck pointing at the windowsill framing and the foundation below. We took photos at that time, and again in January of 2019. We have submitted those photos to the ZLR and also present here on the board for comparison and evidence that the cracking has not changed in three years. What has changed in that three-year period? Traffic volume has certainly not decreased. We have not done any restoration work to the building or any major structural work. The foot traffic and use of the building has, in fact, increased in that time period. The only change has been that blasting has not occurred in three years. The state of Wisconsin views our barn as a historic structure and requires that any time the DOT does work near our Round Barn, that they must have an onsite engineering consultant. This occurred in 1998, when the road was revamped at Highway 12 and 18, and again in 2012, when our driveway was moved to another area on the farm. If it's required for the DOT to have an onsite engineer, why is it not, there is no recourse for a neighborhood gravel pit that's causing damage to our farm? Condition number two, already permitted uses. Presenting before this committee is not new to us. We have stood here before on other occasions defending our business. We work directly with zoning to write ordinances that follow specific guidelines for safety, et cetera, and we have abided by those guidelines as a business that is a member of our town community and our county in general. We have been backed by our town board, the zoning committee, the county board, and our county supervisor. We are functioning as an already permitted use. The history of our functionality of the Oak Park Quarry jeopardizes that use. Condition number three, will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property. The brand for Schuster's Playtime Farm is our Round Barn. As fifth-generation farmers from Dane County with a sixth generation ready to take the reins, damage and destruction of the barn greatly impact our business and our family's livelihood. Schuster's Farm hosts tens of thousands of guests each fall. We have a longstanding history of actively supporting the community through seasonal employment of almost 200 staff per year, donations to the community functions, scholarships, and other local high school support. As a business in Dane County, we also use Dane County resources, in particular gravel, lots and lots of gravel. There are over 100 operating gravel pits in Dane County. When we need gravel, we make a phone call, and within an hour, we have gravel on our farm. The county does use gravel, but we don't need gravel from an operator that doesn't operate safely. The need for gravel is projected to decrease even with road recycling. We also don't need gravel from an operator that sends postcards stating that they've operated safely for decades, when that statement is false. We encourage you to really take a look at the postcards. Where are they from? What is their relationship to the quarry? And what is their relationship to this township? Less than 5 percent of the postcards you receive were from township residents.
You have one minute left.
In closing, perfect, thank you. In closing, please truly listen to the testimony presented this evening, testimony from living experts, neighbors to the quarry, experts that have presented how the quarry has not abided by the first three standards of the CUP. The pit operated for years, decades, without an issue. The operation issue is that it is not operating safely now with new ownership. True, like experts cannot afford to fight the mining industry, and claims of damage have always been denied by the quarry. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ethel Lund. She's over here.
My name is Ethel Lund, and I reside at 12 McGovern Court in Deerfield. I am a member of St. Paul's Liberty Lutheran and serve on the board of the Women of the Church. I wish to speak today in regards to past history and future choices. There is an underlying issue here in that the quarry is one, on one hand, denying all evidence before them and you in regards to past unsafe practices and structural damage at multiple sites, and then also present. at multiple sites, and then also presenting as a new and changed business, willing to follow procedures, to have an open forum for complaints to be filed, to keep records of clean fill, and so on. The quarry's suggestions for filing complaints and documentation to verify clean fill are not data or substantial evidence, rather they are just processes they are presenting. They are not a meeting of conditions. There are some discrepancies and issues with the CUP that need to be addressed. First, under the category of blasting protocol at numbers two and eleven, and in many other instances throughout the document, it is indicated that notification will be made to Saint Paul's Church and anyone residing within one thousand three hundred twenty feet. At the town board meeting in May of two thousand and sixteen, John Halverson agreed that notification would be given to all within a minimum of two thousand six hundred and forty feet or one-half mile. Truly given the information in regards to the lay of the bedrock surrounding the pit and the distance of buildings from that pit that have incurred damage, a one-half mile is not even inconclusive, inclusive of the potentially affected area. Second, the PPVs indicated in the CUP are from two thousand and fifteen, not the PPVs adopted by the town board in two thousand and sixteen. Third, in conjunction with the PPVs indicated, the projected tons of rock per year and projected blasts don't seem to match based on tonnage slash blasting level according to the PPVs indicated in two this, two thousand and sixteen adoption and number of blasts. Curiously, however, the projections are closer if using the incorrect blasting levels that are indicated as the town ordinance levels by the applicant. What are the true projected numbers of blasting when abiding by the two thousand and sixteen most current town board ordinance? Fourth, in addition, the amount of expected tonnage and blast is indicated as not limited to. This is very concerning, given the damage that began to occur to area structures once blasting rate increased under the ownership of John Halverson, but had not been an issue with past quarry owners and businesses that blasted and hauled from the Oak Park Quarry. Giving such wide berth for blasting without any recourse for continued damage is not appropriate and does not safeguard the community structures. Fifth, excuse me, the length of the proposed permit is for a substantially longer period of time than was discussed several years ago. Actions speak louder than words. A ten-year permit is not warranted given past actions. Damages that have already occurred in the presence of historic buildings, the quarry needs to demonstrate it can be a community member not given free rein for ten years. Six, in closing, a dialogue does not occur when one party refuses to look, listen, or even compromise. Being a community member would imply that one operates at least equally or gives more than one takes. The quarry pays approximately seven thousand in taxes and does not employ any town residents. The actions of the quarry have cost the township and local residents a significant amount of time and money. These are not actions of a group that wishes to be part of a vibrant community. Along the topic of the community, and in particular, the quarry's promise for a community response program, what does a community response program mean? If, what has been being represented for several years and again today, tombstones moving uphill, mortar crumbling, new mortar cracking, changes not occurring for three years, is not deemed as evidence? What is evidence? Do one of these historic structures need to collapse? Does someone need to die? Thank you.
Thank you, Ethel. Alan Mickelson.
Hi, Alan.
Hi, guys. Just got a couple of things for you here. Just note the color code on the top here. So my name is Alan Mickelson. I reside at three thirty-four Washburn Road in Deerfield. I'm a fourth-generation member at Saint Paul's Liberty Lutheran, and I'm here tonight with my wife Susan and my girls Alma and Evy. Put your hand. So they're be, the fifth generation of my family going to this church. So I'd like to comment further on the lack of responsible general business practices, I guess I would say, as evidenced by the quarry blasting that has exceeded state and local regulations in the past, which was detrimental to and endangered public health, safety, comfort, and general welfare that is violating standard number one. So in the summer of two thousand and fifteen, members of the congregation requested a seismograph to be placed at the church for all blasting events at the quarry. Consequently, seismographic recordings began on July twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen, and the blaster submitted the blasting reports to both the township and the church. The data from the church, along with the seismograph data at the closest residential structures surrounding the quarry, have been compiled, compiled into one spreadsheet, which you guys are seeing there. Considering the blasting log for the quarry for just the later half of two thousand and fifteen, that is again from July twenty-first through December fourth, there was thirty-one blasting events recorded there. Out of those thirty-one blasts that were recorded at the church, there were five blasts that exceeded the local ordinance of point three inches per second for the PPV level, and one blast that actually exceeded the local ordinance of one hundred and twenty-three decibels for the maximum allowable overpressure. Many, many more violations were recorded at other residents in the area as highlighted in that spreadsheet. As you can see, almost every blast, there's something highlighted there where it was over. It should also be pointed out that in the supplemental information submitted by the quarry for their CUP renewal, states the quarry was unaware of any blasting events that exceeded the state limits in two thousand and fifteen. However, on August twelfth, you'll notice, two thousand and fifteen, the blasting report submitted to the town indicates that there was a misfire at the quarry resulting in an air blast with an overpressure of one hundred and thirty-five point three decibels at Dennis Mann's residence, and that's the eleven ninety-one Liberty Road on that spreadsheet. The state limit is one hundred and thirty-three, so at one thirty-five point three was obviously over and they were aware of it. Here's a, that's the copy of the report that you see there, the blasting report, this is the second piece there, not the spreadsheet. The Fly Rock accident on September eighth, two thousand and fifteen is also a state violation as mentioned earlier. In addition, it should be noted that out of the thirty-one blasting events in just the later half of two thousand and fifteen, data is missing seven times in various locations, which this would indicate that either a seismograph was not placed at a particular location or the seismograph was not working. According to the town ordinance, the quarry operator is responsible for supplying the seismographic measurement and recording equipment and preparing the blasting log that is submitted to the town. In other words, the quarry operator is both responsible for monitoring the blasting events as well as the oversight of those events, which is an apparent conflict of interest. Again, we feel in the past that Oak Park Quarry has been negligent in meeting the standards as required by the CUP, especially standard number one. The safety and general welfare of our church and the community has been endangered, and the quarry has not provided any new evidence that they'll be able to ensure our safety in the future going forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mallory Frelick.
Mallory Frelick, twelve eighty-five Old Stad Road, Deerfield. We built our home at twelve eighty-five Old Stad Road in the summer and fall of two thousand and nine, with occupancy on December eighteenth, two thousand and nine. We had purchased them, then the vacant land in two thousand and eight. At that time, there was no activity at the Oak Park Quarry or during the time that we were building. In fact, the last CUP with Ammon and Son ended April two thousand and seven. The new and present CUP was not approved until March two thousand and nine. New operations did not begin under the present ownership until November two thousand and ten. Between December of oh nine and the summer of two thousand and fifteen, six years, we noted no cracks in our thin-coat plaster anywhere in our home. Frequent and intense blasting occurred in the summers of two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and fifteen at the quarry. We first noticed cracks in two thousand and fifteen, all on the east side of our home, which is six hundred feet from the quarry. We started taking pictures of these cracks March first, two thousand and sixteen. When we learned that the quarry was not going to apply for a blasting permit in two thousand and sixteen, we began to repair and repaint the rooms with these cracks the winter of two thousand and sixteen. Some repairs still remain. We took new pictures of these repairs December thirteenth of two thousand and eighteen. The repairs are in good condition, and there are no new cracks anywhere in our home. We believe that the cracks were the result of blasting and that no new damage has occurred because there has been no new debt, new blasting in the last three years, and attached other pictures of the cracks. By damage, by damaging our property, the Oak Park Quarry has violated conditions one and two, damage affects the property values. The pictures that I have given you is substantial evidence that blasting caused the damage. Damage complaints have been brought to the attention of the quarry owners. These claims were dismissed by the quarry. There were never any, there was never any, they never took any responsibility for any of these claims. They always offered excuses. The excuses were, um, the houses were settling, the damage was due to weather or age of the house. This quarry states that they will abide by conditions in the new CUP. However, this quarry has violated conditions in their present CUP. This committee in the past has nearly revoked their quarry, this quarry CUP by a three-two to two vote in two thousand and sixteen. So you can see that this quarry does have problems with their, um, conditions. Thank you.
Thanks, Mallory. Next up, we have Dennis Mann. Dennis, you look pretty familiar. You've been here before.
Yeah. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Dennis Mann. I resided one one nine one Liberty Road, and I've been asked to read a letter from, uh, on behalf of my next-door neighbor, Karen Harvard, who resides at twelve twenty-five Liberty Road, Deer, Deerfield, excuse me. My property and home is on the north border of the land and Oak Park or, and quarry site. I have lived there since nineteen seventy-four. When the blasting occurs, I receive a lot of shaking of my home. The dishes rattle in the cupboards, my ceiling fan rattles and sways, the house literally cracks. I have new cracks in my foundation that were not there prior to blasting. Some blasts are so bad, they scared me and her grandchildren. I am also concerned for my water well. Photos have been of a pre-blast survey, before and after photos that they, and have been given to Mr. Allen, we gave in the Manila folder, but yeah, that's pictures of her foundation. Then I've been asked to, uh, read another letter on behalf of my father Vernon Mann, who's deceased, and my stepmother Dolores Mann. They sold her hundred and acre, one hundred and seventy acre home farm and quarry to John Halverson in two thousand and ten. The farmhouse is located across Oak Park Road about five hundred feet from Saint Paul Liberty Lutheran Church. Dolores, Dolores's letter says, "I Dolores Mann, made this statement of my own free will and will testify to the same if called to testify in court. My husband and I own approximately one hundred and seventy acres in the township of Deerfield and sold it to John Halverson in October two thousand and ten." After the sale, John started blasting in the lime rock pit on the property. For the first time in my memory, we experienced trembling of our farmhouse and dishes rattling in the cupboards. This vibration and dish rattling was unusual because over the years, we have had different companies lease the pit, but never did we have that experience. At the time John was blasting, I was utilizing the southwest bedroom in my farmhouse for an office. Soon I noticed the interior wall had a crack at the top of the wall where it met the ceiling. I brought this to John's attention. He brushed it off as caused by the house settling. I then informed him that the house was built in the early nineteen fifties and that the house was sitting on a table of lime rock. Settling was hardly the reason for the crack. He did not offer to do anything for me. And I'm also opposed to the quarry because of, or the CUP because of the damages being done to the Liberty Lutheran Church in Deerfield. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dennis. Rachel Beck.
Sure. Mr. Mann? I have a quick question for you.
Oh, okay. All right, I'm gonna take those at the next meeting. Questions from the.
I think you have the discretion to ask questions.
Okay, go ahead, uh, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, I just wanted to do some clarification. You read some statements from your parents.
Mm-hmm.
And can you tell me when they issued those statements?
Um, in the last month, two months? She made the statement, "My father's deceased," a couple of years ago. But Dolores, uh, had this letter, wrote this letter up, I don't know, a couple of months ago, so it was ready for the hearing at the township and that hearing for the town.
The statement, did you also read one from your father? Was your mother referencing?
Yes, I just put that in there that they, that my father and stepmother sold the farm to John Halverson in two thousand and ten.
Okay.
Did that answer the question?
Thank you, Dennis. Uh, next up, we have, hmm.
Rachel Beck.
Rachel Beck?
Yeah. Um, we've got kind of a church, and they will be on for the rest of the conference here at some of these. My name is Rachel Beck, and I reside at two twenty-five South Prairie Avenue in Deerfield. I too am a fourth-generation member of Saint Paul's Liberty Lutheran Church. I have also been the office administrator for the, in the church for almost twenty years. I will celebrate my twentieth year this year. First, I would like to comment on the fact that the church's foundation is built on the very same red bock, bedrock as the quarry bedrock. In essence, our historic church is subjective to the impact of every blast from the foundation up. Unfortunately, when the quarry blast occurs, the corresponding stress, stress waves travel through a solid, dense bedrock layer with little energy or dissipation. In other words, the peak particle velocity, or PPV, does not diminish or dampen out as it would in non-homogeneous materials such as soil or gravel. Consequently, the high, relatively high PPV magnitudes that the church experiences are extremely detrimental to our fragile building. In addition, because the height of the church and the bell tower in particular, there is a stress and motion amplification in response of the structure. According to the US Bureau of Mines study, a two-story homes commonly have an amplification, amplification factor in the range of two to four, but it could be much larger for our higher, for our higher bell tower. For example, the motion of the top of the bell tower could be well over four times the displacement seen at the base. It should also be emphasized that our church was built in eighteen fifty-one. That's ten years before Abraham Lincoln became president. As far as we know, it's the oldest Norwegian Lutheran church in the US that is still holding regularly scheduled services in the original structure. It was constructed by local farmers using non-engineered material such as primarily hand-quarried limestone and mortar, and thus it should be considered fragile. Note that the limestone that was used in the, to build the church is the same structural integrity as the stone that is being blasted in the quarry. In fact, last fall, a mason that does restoration work examined the original masonry of our church, and his comment is still resonates with us. He said, "This stone is only one step away from being gravel." Consequently, it is extremely important to consider the cultural and histor, historical significance of the church. It was constructed by some of the first Norwegian settlers in Koshkane on Prairie. In addition, the structure, the materials of the construction, and the type of the construction, and the fact that it sits directly on the bedrock, all contribute to the church's sensitivity to ground-borne vibrations. The responsiveness of the structure and the existing condition of the structure must be factors in determining whether any blasting in the immediate area should be considered. must be factors in determining whether any blasting in the immediate area should be considered. Therefore, we feel that if the future blasting is permitted, it will accelerate degeneration of the stone and the mortar and continue to impair worship in the same place and location in the future that many of our generations, previous generations have had, which is in direct violation of standard number two. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Steve, hello? I'm Steve Wetzel. I reside at 2029 Evergreen Drive in Cambridge, Wisconsin. I'm a member of St. Paul's Liberty Lutheran Church, and I would like to address the issue of damage to the tombstones. In January 2016, St. Paul's Liberty Lutheran Cemetery Association submitted a claim to its insurance company regarding 45 tombstones that had been damaged due to blasting. The headstones and monuments had shifted off-center on either their stone bases and/or concrete foundations. The shifting was recent, since in each case there existed a specific delineation that indicated where the headstone was originally positioned. The insurance company investigated the claim and concluded that the movement of the tombstones was due to an external force, especially when tombstones weighing up to half a ton were observed to have shifted uphill. The Cemetery Association received the maximum compensation, which was $15,000, on its insurance claim for the tombstone damage. However, they were also required to sign a release agreement, specifically stating they would never submit another claim. And I quote from that statement, "A rising out of loss, damages, or expenses that have been or in the future may be incurred arising out of past or future movement of or damage to any tombstone or other grave site structure caused by or resulting from blasting operations at the Oak Park Quarry." And please see Exhibit B in your handout for a copy of the signed release statement that was written by Church Mutual. Consequently, if future blasting is permitted, there is no recourse for the Cemetery Association to continue fixing damage that may occur. In December of 2018, spot checks were made on a few of the tombstones to see if any movement of the stones could be detected since they were last photographed three years earlier. And the stones had not been subjected to any blasting events during these last three years. The photographs of four sample tombstones are shown in Exhibit C, comparing the measurements from 2015 to 2018. In essence, there was no change in the positions of the stones, including some that had previously shifted uphill. It is possible for a tombstone to displace over time under gravitational forces, especially if the foundation is settled such that the base is severely tilted. However, observing tombstones weighing up to 1,000 pounds recently shifting uphill opposing gravity provides substantial physical evidence to the fact that these stones have been subject to external forces caused by blasting. One additional piece of evidence was found concerning tombstone number four in Exhibit C. A photo of this tombstone, the Gilderhus Stone, was recently found on the Find a Grave website. Someone added the photo to the website on May 8, 2011. It appears that the headstone date back to about 1930. And the 2011 photo shows the upper portion of the stone was still in its original position after 80-plus years. Again, look at Exhibit C. Therefore, the uphill shift of the tombstone took place between 2011 and 2015, when blasting was a regular event. Therefore, in terms of the existing tombstones, we feel that standards two and three cannot be satisfied. The use, values, and enjoyment of our property have already been substantially impaired and diminished by the conditional use of the quarry. Additional restoration improvements, no longer covered by insurance, will be a significant cost to the Cemetery Association and possibly the individual families. In addition, the future expansion of the cemetery could be impaired with the proposed CUP. The church owns an additional acre of farmland that is adjacent to the existing cemetery just north of the paved, used-to-shaped driveway. Consequently, future graves and tombstones in this area would be extremely vulnerable to the quarry blasting since they would be within about 200 feet of the quarry's boundary. Standard number three states that the CUP should not impede the development of our property. However, if the quarry continues in operation, our ability to sell lots and to develop this area for expansion of the cemetery will indeed be impaired. Thank you.
Thank you. Roxy Englested? Certainly, that's fine.
I am Roxanne Englested. I reside at 3045 Clearview Road in Cambridge, Wisconsin. And I am a lifelong member of St. Paul's Liberty Lutheran Church, and I currently serve as the secretary of the Cemetery Association. In addition, I've been serving as a technical consultant for the church over the past few years. Since my name's already been brought up a couple of times tonight by the Oak Park Quarry, I thought I should state my qualifications for the record. In 1988, I received my PhD in engineering mechanics with a minor in civil engineering, specifically in structural dynamics, from the UW Madison. My dissertation was on the nonlinear vibratory response of structural components in nuclear fusion reactors caused by sequential blast loadings. After completing my degree, I joined the faculty at the UW College of Engineering and served as chair of the Mechanical Engineering Department from 2007 to 2013. I spent my early career teaching the design of containment vessels and first-world protection schemes for inertial confinement fusion reaction chambers. This involved determining the structural dynamic response of cylindrical and spherical vessels and their components due to nuclear explosions. I have authored, co-authored 121 archival journal publications and 157 conference proceedings, and given over 75 invited presentations nationally and internationally, and advised 17 post-docs, 21 PhD students, and 30 master's students. My instructional duties included teaching undergraduate and graduate courses in the areas of dynamics, structural analysis, vibrations, and solid mechanics. As a result of my research and teaching accomplishments, I was awarded two chaired professorships, that is, the Timoshenko Chair and the Wyman Chair of Mechanical Engineering. I retired from UW in 2017. Tonight, I would like to address the document that was submitted by the Oak Park Quarry pertaining to their renewal application. The document was written by Dr. Lawrence Gooby nearly three years ago as it addresses the issues that were presented and discussed at the Town of Deerfield Public Hearing on March 29, 2016. The attorney for the quarry, Mitch Olson, sent the document to the Town of Deerfield and the ZLR Committee on April 5, 2016. Since I have been serving as a technical consultant for St. Paul's Liberty Lutheran Church, this church submitted my rebuttal to Dr. Gooby's comments to the Deerfield Town Board and the ZLR Committee on May 10, 2016. As a matter of record, I would like to resubmit this rebuttal to the ZLR Committee tonight, and I have copies here. I'd like to call your attention to the last section, which deals with the shifting of the tombstones. In this section, I point out the incorrect assumptions that Dr. Gooby made in his calculations. And in addition, I prove how the level of blasting at the Oak Park Quarry could indeed shift the tombstones off their basis. Finally, I'd like to point out that the chart that the Oak Park Quarry presented on vibration limits is extremely misleading. They implied that prior to the local ordinance adopted by the Town of Deerfield, blasting at the quarry was at a level of 2.0 inches per second. See that on the chart. Unfortunately, this could not have been the case unless the blasting that was allowed in the quarry violated all of the state blasting code. The state code defines PPV levels as a function of frequency. In fact, blasting at frequencies in the range of 10 hertz, the maximum vibration limit in PPV allowed by the state is actually 0.5 inches per second, a quarter of what's showing on the chart. So I have a copy of the blasting code for you, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rex. Sharon Holzapple? Holzapple, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Holzapple. I reside at W-8765 Advent Road in Fort Atkinson, Wisconsin. I am a lifelong member of St. Paul's Liberty Lutheran Church too. Have served in several positions and currently serve as the co-president of the Women of the Church. Tonight, I would like to share with you some observations from a few members of our congregation by reading their notarized letters. These should be considered primary sources of evidence. From Exhibit D, page one, this is from Art Mickelson, and I quote, "I was stopped by the parking lot of the church. The man said they were about to blast rock in the pit. Sitting on the road, I looked up by the church. There were three or four people up there, so I pulled over into the parking lot and walked up to the church. While waiting, I talked to the men that were there. They said the blasters never used to stop the traffic, but the last time a rock hit and damaged a car. While standing there, I asked how long before she blows. They said they thought it was overdue. Anyway, I leaned up against the window sill on the bell tower. When the blast went off, I couldn't believe how the church shook. Next, little pieces of mortar in sizes of peas and sand fell down, one piece almost the size of my thumb man." From Exhibit D, page two, this is from Lynn Meyer, and I quote, "From July 21 until December 4, 2015, I was present at the church for almost every blast occurring at Oak Park Quarry. For each blasting event, I typically held on to the top of the well casing located in front of the church on the northeast side, as shown in the photo. I felt the vibrations in the casing each blast, but there were a few that felt exceptionally strong. In particular, I remember when in addition to the tremendous shaking in the well casing, I visually observed the relatively severe vibrations of the stained glass window in the New Narthex that was constructed in 2001. The intensity of the air blast was also extremely alarming." Exhibit D, page three, from Roxanne Englested, and I quote, "From July 21 until December 4, 2015, I was present at the church for a number of the blasts occurring at the Oak Park Quarry. There were two blasts during that time for which I specifically heard the cracking of the church. The first time was in late summer of 2015. I was inside the sanctuary, the church, touching the large stained glass window on the north side in order to sense the response of the window, as shown in photo one. During the blast, I could feel the vibrations of the window, but I also heard cracking of the plaster and/or windows on the south side of the sanctuary. The second time was in the fall of 2015. I stood outside the basement door at the lower level of the New Narthex, as seen in photo two. During the blast, I heard cracking of the stone and mortar and as well straining and creaking of the wood structure near the top of the building. For safety reasons, I quickly ran away from the area because I was concerned that stone and mortar might be falling from above." Exhibit D, page five, is from Pastor Holly Slater, and I quote, "In August 2015, I stood inside the sanctuary, touching the stained glass window on the northeast side during a blasting event. When I heard and felt the blast, I felt movement in the stained glass and heard cracking in and around the stained glass. Later that week, in August 2015, I stood outside the church on the northeast side of the sanctuary. I was in the alcove. During the blast event, I heard and felt the blast and then felt the overpressure shortly thereafter. The photographs of Pastor at both locations are in her notarized letter. In summary, members of the congregation have observed physical evidence of damage during blasting, which is impaired use, value, enjoyment of our historic church, which is in direct violation of standard two. Thank you for this opportunity."
Thank you. Next, we have Dave Wilkinson?
Yep.
Hi, Dave.
Good evening. My name is Dave Wilkinson, and I reside at 42 Oak Ridge Trail in the village of Deerfield, Wisconsin. I have been a member of St. Paul's Liberty Church for 46 years, and I would like to make a few comments about our historic church, specifically stained glass windows. Standard number two states that the uses, values, and enjoyment of the property shall not be substantially impaired or diminished by the conditional use of the quarry. We fear it may be too late as the stained glass windows have already been compromised. In a sense, the stained glass windows that were installed in the New Narthex in 2001 have a few hairline cracks in them, which is difficult to explain, given their age. However, it should be noted that these newer windows are located at the east side of the New Narthex, which was constructed on the north side of the church. The windows in that area are extremely vulnerable to the force from an air blast pressure since the energy from the air blast could come and find or trap this concave corner. The older stained glass windows found in the bell tower appear to have numerous cracks that are relatively new, especially the north side that faces the quarry. In addition, some of the steel framing that spans the stained glass for support is separated from the glass. And because of the water seeping into the interior of the bell tower, the wood frames supporting the perimeter of the stained glass windows now need to be repaired or replaced due to water damage. The historical significance of the older stained glass windows has been described in a letter from Mr. Paul Phelps at Oakbrook Esser Studios after he visited the church on a site visit. Please see Exhibit F. The older windows, which were installed in the church in 1914, were designed by a highly regarded artist, Carl Reiman, from Milwaukee, as stated in a letter from Oakbrook Esser. "The history and ports of a stained glass window is first and foremost defined by the artist that initially designed it. It is a testament to the parishioners of St. Paul's Liberty Church that they sought out an artist of this caliber to create the stained glass windows that are seen today. The power of that action brought beautiful works of art into a small rural farming town. It should be noted that there are eight large windows in the nave, each measuring four feet five wide by 11.5 high. In the bell tower, there is only, there is one entry arch window, five feet in width and height of 4.5. Two windows along the stairway to the balcony, each are three feet in width and a height of 10 feet, and three tower rose windows, each four foot in diameter. Mr. Phelps goes on to describe the condition of these windows, how fragile they are due to their age. And I'm quoting from the letter. "The stained glass windows occur at the original condition, meaning there's been, no restoration has been done to date. Some minor repairs were done in place in 1986. As all stained glass windows age, they become more fragile as the elements of the window, lead, glazing putty, copper wires, reforcing bars start to break down and lose their integrity. This is not through a lack of attention or maintenance, it's just a passing of time. The windows at St. Paul's Liberty Lutheran Church are 105 years old. Even though they've served very well, deterioration will continue under normal circumstances. Other environmental conditions may accelerate deterioration. Thus, there are two key issues for the older stained glass windows. First and foremost, they are extremely fragile and could easily be broken down. Secondly, any other environmental conditions, such as blasting, fracture of the glass due to ground-borne vibration, overpressure from the air blast will accelerate their deterioration." I would like to thank you for the time, and then we ask you to feel that blast or the blasting does not meet standard number two. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Todd?
So my name is Todd Burcom. I reside at 954 San Piper Court in Sun Prairie, Wisconsin. I'm a lifelong member of St. Paul's Liberty Lutheran and presently serve as the president of the- of the church council. I'd like to comment further on the photographic evidence that illustrates the damage that occurred at the church during the summer and fall of two thousand fifteen, when blasting was a regular event. It appears as if the bell tower took the greatest hit from blasting, which makes sense, given that it's the tallest and most flexible part of the structure. In addition to a member of the congregation experiencing stone and mortar falling from the bell tower during a blast, which we just heard about a few minutes ago, as he stood outside and the mortar fell around him, we also have photographic evidence of some of the same type of damage on the opposite side of the structure. In the spring of two thousand fifteen, fresh landscaping mulch was put down on the south side of the bell tower. Throughout the rest of the year, we found that stone and mortar pieces had fallen out from higher up on the bell tower and were lying on top of the new mulch. Please see Exhibit E for the photographic evidence. So that's in your packet there, but it's this one here. Now, water has been seeping in through the holes in the stone and mortar and has caused damage to the interior of the bell tower, as well as the wooden framework holding the stained glass windows. In fact, the interior paint and plaster are peeling away from the walls, were even, and were even wet to the touch during the summer and fall of two thousand eighteen. We expect that this will be extremely costly to repair the masonry, replace the wood frame around the perimeter of the stained glass windows, and replaster and paint the interior walls. One of the things that had been said about this in the past is it was age that was causing this mortar to fall out. And in the picture, you can see where it fell out here from the bell tower. We're not seeing that same thing in the other areas of the church. And again, the bell tower takes the brunt of the blast. We've also been monitoring mortar cracks next to the large stained glass window on the north side of the original building, which is now an interior wall in the new Narthex addition of two thousand one. Consequently, it has been in a climate-controlled area since that time. The crack was originally photographed by Vibra Tech in a pre-blast survey on September second, two thousand fifteen. After being subjected to sixteen blasting events in the fall of two thousand fifteen, the crack was photographed again. It had increased in length by ten inches. The crack was photographed again in December of two thousand eighteen, after three years of no blasting, the length of the crack had not changed. Please see Exhibit G for the photographic evidence. And if you look at that one in the upper left corner, you can see the original picture, and it showed that it was twenty inches long, and after the blasting, it was thirty inches long, and now, three years later, after no blasting, it's still thirty inches long. So it has not grown since they quit blasting. We feel that if blasting is allowed to continue, accelerated deterioration of our historic church will continue, and Standard Number Two cannot be met. In other words, the use, value, and enjoyment of our property will certainly be impaired and diminished. So you've now heard and seen several pieces of substantial evidence, and will see and hear some more shortly. But I want to take a second here to just reemphasize the importance of this evidence, since statutes require it in order to meet the six standards. I would also like to point out the lack of evidence from the applicant. The letters of support, which many were read tonight and that were submitted, should not be considered as substantial evidence, as they're merely opinion of those writing the letters, and includes no concrete evidence. They do have opinions written by Dr. Gooby, and Roxy talked about that a little bit earlier, and some of the things that he had written. But however, Dr. Gooby's evidence is theoretical and based on evidence from studies that do not have the same circumstances as blasting, next to a hundred and sixty-seven-year-old church, built on the same exact material they are trying to break apart by blasting. He claims that PPD levels don't need to be as low as they have been determined, but the fact is, we have evidence the damage has been done. We've just shown you that evidence. Therefore, Dr. Gooby's theory is not accurate in this particular situation, and shouldn't be considered substantial evidence. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Rochelle Vandergerl. Did I pronounce your last name?
Good evening. My name's Rochelle Vandergerl. I live at six-eleven Terrace Road in the village of Deerfield. I'm a member of St. Paul's Liberty Lutheran Church, and I've been a member for nineteen years, and I serve as the secretary of the Women of the Church. Tonight, I would like to comment on the accident that occurred at the Oak Park Quarry, and how the subsequent consequences of that accident have impaired the use and enjoyment of the church and cemetery, which is in direct violation of Standard Two. On September eighth, two thousand fifteen, there was a fly rock accident on Oak Park Road caused by quarry blasting. In this case, a truck was hit by fly rock, cracking the windshield and injuring the passengers. According to state regulations, all fly rock must remain within the control blasting site area, as given in the Safety Professional Services Code three oh seven point four four. This accident also resulted in fines, both the quarry and the blaster, from MSHA, that is, the Mine Safety and Health Administration, since it endangered the public safety, which of course is in violation of Standard One. Subsequent to the fly rock incident, the quarry operator has been required to position flaggers to block off a relatively large section of Oak Park Road during any blasting event. This means that there is limited access to the church during this time, and this is especially true for, true for the sections of the cemetery that are located north of the church. According to Standard Two, the use of enjoyment of our property should not be impaired or diminished by the proposed conditional use. Unfortunately, having to block off access to the church and cemetery is indeed a problem for not only members of the congregation, but also the community in general. For example, the church often hosts activities, monthly for the Boy Scouts, forage, polling place, and the local community theater groups, et cetera. In addition, blocking off access to the cemetery requires coordination with funeral homes, grave excavators, and monument installers. This does not even include the limited access for emergency vehicles that have a major thoroughfare for area homes as well as the church during blasting times. Also is a major reroute when there's accidents on twelve and eighteen, on seventy-three, and sometimes on BB. Oak Park Quarry has not followed the standards in the past, and it has not provided new evidence that they will be able to abide by the standards in two thousand nineteen going forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Rochelle. Pastor Holly Slater.
Holly Slater. I reside at nine-north Washington Deerfield. I am also the pastor of St. Paul's Liberty Lutheran Church. I'm in opposition of the Oak Park conditional use permit, application zero-two-four-four-nine, because it does not meet Standard Three, that the operations will not impede improvement of the surrounding property. So we have an exhaustive list of maintenance that's occurred at the church in the last hundred and sixty-seven years that it has existed, several, like eleven decades longer than the quarry was established, according to that chart. So we have this huge list, and given that there was a lapse in blasting from two thousand fifteen to two thousand eighteen, we thought we would start working on the bell tower because it took the brunt of the blasting, and it's deteriorated at an accelerated rate compared to the rest of our building. So we decided to connect with Vogel Brothers, and upon them coming out to the church, they recommended that we work directly with what they call consulting firms that specialize in historical restoration, something that was new to me. The firms contract teams of architects, engineers, masons, and stained glass restoration specialists. So since the fall of two thousand eighteen, the church has contacted five of those recommended firms. Each firm we contacted stated they would not give any type of proposal without a site visit. It makes me question the Oak Park Quarry's experts, who can make statements about the quarry, the church, and the cemetery without a site visit. That was incredibly important to these people. Each firm team members who visited did not speak outside of their area of expertise either, which makes me wonder how Gunner from Conrad Schmidt could speak on behalf of masons, framers, and painters. It seems a bit far-reaching for a guy whose expertise is in stained glass and not even as a general contractor. And more than half of his comments with the pictures were about his expertise in something other than stained glass, and his two pages of photos and comments didn't even include the stained glass we were most concerned about. So then, in reaching out to each recommended firm, we have been met with resistance because of an active quarry being in close proximity of the church. Repeatedly, we have heard that out of all the buildings each has been asked to assess in the upper Midwest, this is one of the oldest. They also agree that this is a unique building of its era, because it's constructed with corried limestone and mortar instead of wood, which would have been a lot of other churches in the area. So the Norwegian settlers who built this church intended that it would be a permanent structure for use by future generations. So what did the firms have to say when they came for visits? Well, all of the firms have said that a proposal may be moot until blasting ceases, all five firms. They also stated openly that if blasting is not causing damage, it is most certainly accelerating deterioration. So one of the consulting firms wouldn't even come for a site visit, because they heard there was an active quarry, and they said, "It's not even worth our time." A second firm conducted a visit, but then declined to submit a bid. Then you have exhibits of two of the other ones. So one is a letter from River Architects, the third one, they've now been advised by four structural engineers not to bid on the project. So you have the letter from the first one, they've contacted three others, and they're not willing to look. And then there's a masonry company that told us, "You might as well budget fifteen thousand dollars extra per year for restoration if blasting continues," because they recognized that the damage on the church was more than normal deterioration. Each firm said there's no doubt that blasting is affecting this church and must be taken into account in their proposals, if they can even risk giving one. So now, our church governing body is given charge to go to our congregation to ask for money equal to our annual budget, to create and implement a maintenance schedule to restore and maintain our historical structure. We may have to contract with someone who cannot guarantee their work just to prevent further deterioration, or we may need to go ahead and repair parts of the building, knowing it might be for naught in the long run. We've done our research and due diligence in trying to maintain our building. We're trying to plan for the future of our historical building, which has been called "unique," yet the quarry cannot even give a plan of how to be proactive rather than retroactive, nor can they give any evidence, let alone substantial evidence, that they are not accelerating deterioration within our building. How can we ask reasonable people to take such a risk financially, knowing that accelerated deterioration will continue as long as blasting continues? Does Dane County want to watch the oldest Norwegian Lutheran church still worshipped in deteriorate at an accelerated rate, and the only round barn in the county deteriorate at an accelerated rate because there is such a need of stone from this quarry and not one of the other hundred and seven others in the county? You have to deny this permit based on Standard Three. It has already impeded improvement of our property and only will continue to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we have a summary by Rochelle Jensen.
Rochelle Jensen, thirty-six, forty-four Saddle Ridge, Deerfield, Wisconsin. I'm a township resident, church member for twenty-three years, currently a church council member, but at the time that we brought this before you, I was the church council president. For recent members to the ZLR committee, you've heard that we've been here before. In two thousand fifteen, sixteen, we brought major concerns regarding the blasting at the Oak Park Quarry to the ZLR for review. The ZLR spent many hours of meetings, listening and discussing the issues, and has explained to us that revoking an existing CUP was very difficult, almost unheard of. The ZLR at that time commented openly to Mr. Helverson that it was very rare for a quarry to act in such a way that the county needed to seriously consider revoking their CUP. At that time, the quarry just missed having their CUP revoked by a three-two vote, but it was given a stiff warning to follow the ordinances to avoid further action. The quarry avoided further issues by not blasting again. In fact, their last blast was December fourth, two thousand fifteen. They stopped when their CUP was in danger of being revoked. So here we are today, and while this feels somewhat like déjà vu, a few things have changed. The last time we came, there was an existing CUP, but that CUP expires March twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen. There is no obligation, nor should there be an expectation, to renew another CUP. This time, there's an opportunity for our evidence to be considered, not as personal preference and speculation, but as substantial and credible. Act sixty-seven was passed to prohibit townships from turning down CUPs based on personal preference and speculation, but it also put into place a very important piece, which is that the applicant of the CUP must be able to demonstrate that all requirements and conditions of that application will be satisfied, which must be supported by substantial evidence. When this started years ago, our concerns and evidence of damages to the church properties, decreased home values, and residents' complaints were dismissed as speculation by the Oak Park Quarry. Tonight, we have provided you with numerous pieces of substantial evidence that can be used to support denying this application, and upon reading our evidence, we believe a reasonable person would support our conclusion, that our evidence outweighs the approval of the CUP. That would satisfy the law, should the township board and the ZLR deny this request. As a matter of fact, I would draw your attention to Wisconsin's Court of Appeals, two thousand case, Payne and Dolan versus the Dane County Board of Supervisors and Zoning Natural Resources Committee in Joseph Perezy, I believe that was the former name for this committee, that affirmed that the county supervisor's decision to deny a proposed gravel quarry CUP in the town of Verona on the basis that the concerns of the area residents were substantial and sufficient to support the supervisor's decision for a denial. It is affirmed, that was affirmed during that time by Judge, I forget his name, but he's deceased now, he was at the county for many years. That Dane County Circuit Court case holds great significance and is similarities to the current application and our strong opposition to granting another CUP. But ironically, the burden of proof doesn't fall on us, the opposition. Based on Act sixty-seven, the burden of proof lies in the hands of the applicant, and their response the last time was to stop blasting. And in July and August of two thousand sixteen, Mr. Helverson argued that the ordinances were too restrictive, and he provided letters from three blasting companies indicating that none of them could comply with the blasting ordinances. Ordinances which were created after most research was done regarding blasting limits and specifically took into consideration that the quarry is located near fragile historic structures. They have not blasted in three years, even though they have a current CUP, yet they're asking the town and the county to renew a ten-year CUP, taking us out to the year two thousand twenty-nine, with no substantial evidence to support their ability to blast within the ordinances. Oak Park Quarry submitted their response to the six standards, and the topic of blasting was mentioned only twice, as if they were hoping it would be overlooked. Their application states that they are, quote, "actively seeking and interviewing blasting companies with experience," but I would encourage the ZLR to be questioning why the Oak Park Quarry has waited until two months before their current CUP ends to be figuring out how they will fulfill the requirements of the application. In January, the town board stated that the quarry must agree to a test blast before the CUP will be approved. They found a blaster, who they have still yet unnamed, to conduct a blast, but not until the ground thaws, potentially in May. Could the blaster in Oak Park Quarry be concerned that blasting within the ordinances during winter months might not meet the ordinances? The proposed CUP is written for year-round operation. Remember, it must have substantial evidence to meet the requirements all of the time, not just some of the time. Based on their lack of evidence, it would seem their request would be a moot point. If they can't find businesses to blast or are willing to blast at our levels, and they've not blasted in three years under the revised ordinances, it would be remiss of the township board and the ZLR to grant them another CUP. It is a truly complex and complicated situation. We are probably the only instance in the state, and probably even in the country, to have an active blasting quarry near an historic church. But you must realize that the burden of proof lies with the applicant, and if the applicant cannot fulfill the obligation under Act sixty-seven, there is case law from this county that supports that evidence and testimony given by area residents is competent and credible and affirms the denial of this application. We thank you very much for your time this evening and listening to all of us. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we're at the point now where the applicant has time for rebuttal.
First off, in regards to the ten-year CUP that we're asking for, while that is what we're asking for, we still have to get an annual permit from the township yearly. So they control whether the pits open or closed. So they control whether the pits open or closed at a township level. Real quick on traffic, we do have a legal right to, to be, to use the highways with our trucks, even though they are a little bit slower to take off. The information that was given on size and weight and acceleration isn't exactly accurate. In regards to the PPVs in relationship to the amount of rock we blast per blast episode, I don't understand where they're going with that. It's, we would anticipate blasting probably four to ten times a year, and we do employ some residents in the township. In regards to the end of two thousand fifteen, there was a period in time where the township adopted their lower ordinances. At that time, there was a period where argument between John and his attorney in the township as to whether the new ordinances were, should apply to a current CUP, or that the CUP would be grandfathered. So it took some time to straighten that out, and at the end of two thousand fifteen, there was an agreement between John and the township that the township's ordinances would be utilized right away. The, the house referred to by Dolores Mant, that's actually our house now. John actually had bought, that was part of the farmhouse. And we've inspected it, and there, there's no damage or cracking in, in any of the rooms that we can see. Tombstones that were damaged, it's curious that an insurance company would pay claim on tombstones that were supposedly damaged by blasting caused by the quarry next door, but never reached out to us or our insurance company to cover the damages, but yet just paid for it themselves. And the blasting experts we've talked to says it's, it's physically impossible for that, for the tombstones to be moving. And it's, it's, it's interesting that I actually had a tour of the church with Holly recently, and she indicated that in the recent, the most recent addition of the church, there, there were no issues. So I'm not sure where the, the crack, cracking in the new windows is coming from.
Thirty seconds. How much? Thirty seconds.
Uh, the fly rock incident, the quarry was not fined, but the blaster was fined for the incident, and his services are no longer used at the quarry, along with the precaution of closing the road for three to five minutes during the actual blast, which will only happen a few times a year. Am I out?
Can you wrap it up real quick?
Yep. As far as windows in the, the church, the, the individual who did the window study for us had actually gone back and seen where he had quoted the church back in two thousand and five for window restoration, two windows in the bell tower that were deteriorating, but they, they decided at that time not to, not to do anything with them. And you got that in a packet?
Yes, we did.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your input.
Is that it for me, or?
That's it?
No questions?
Okay, thank you. I want to thank everyone for their testimony and for their courtesy. Makes it a lot easier to conduct an event like this when everyone is very respectful of each other. So as I understand it now, this will, will do, have a motion of postponement because there is opposition. And we'll wait for the town action. Is that correct, Majie?
That's correct. You have a few decisions, I think, to make regarding what you accept into the public record for the proposal. So the materials that were presented to you are copy tonight, and we'll try and coordinate with folks and get those electronically, just because it's easier for us to add that material to the future, to the diet. So we've got the, those are automatic. Things that have been submitting, had been submitted electronically to us in advance of the meeting, those are not automatic. So I would suggest for the items, for example, that you see, you know, in your list of attached items to this proposal, it's up to the committee to make a motion to accept those part of the record.
And that motion should be let again?
And, yeah, I'll just give it to you right on the. So things that are submitted electronically are not, and I apologize because this might, you know, it's been a while since I've had to refresh my memory here with your rules and procedures, but so again, written in documentary evidence, it's automatic, testimony, automatic. Things that are electronic, I would suggest, here it is. Yeah, a member of the committee chooses to do so, you can make a motion to enter one or more of the documents received by email or submitted electronically prior to the public hearing. This would consist of virtually all the items that are in your, in your packet. So the application supplements, St. Paul's letter of opposition, and their exhibits. Again, perhaps they provided them in hard copy here, but I would suggest if, again, the committee is agreeable to make a motion to accept, you know, all of these documents into the record, unless you choose to exclude some of them, which again, you have the discretion to do.
I, would someone like to make a motion to include all the documents into the record? So, second. Any discussion on that issue? Hearing none, all those in favor? I, motion carries, so you could input all that. What about this?
Like I said, those are automatic because they were presented at.
So these you'll take and this one too?
Yeah, that one as well.
And then you have that all the, here are the.
Registrations subsequent.
Registrations.
Registrations are automatic.
Yeah, those are, yes.
Anyone from the audience have any questions? Understand the process going forward? Thank you again for your courtesy tonight.
I was wondering about, I understand that these recordings are recorded. Is it possible to get that? Will it, it's a lot of stuff with everything?
Yeah, it should be, it should be, I know there's, there may be a limit on the size of the file, so we'll work with. I, at one point, we have. Yes, it will be made available online in some form or fashion if we can get it in to Legisstar, obviously, now.
We are, I mean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I've seen you before, and now I'm such a good church member, so yeah, thank you. I'm very proud of you for your last.
Yeah, okay, let's move back to our agenda. Peggy, you have a question for.
Well, yeah, no problem. You get to have a procedural motion. Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm so sorry.
Um, so my requests are, I'll move it to the chair once you move it is to have the recording uploaded into Legisstar. It's unfortunate that we are not able to have a video recorded because we are actually equipped in this room typically for video recording. It's one of the only, only room other than two of mine that has the fancy cameras. So I don't know if that's something we can think about. The audio is what I'm looking for, making it future, like really, for, especially if it's like this.
No problem, so you maybe want to call it a recess until things clear down here. This is, this is.
But first of all.
Folks, will you be able to get your attention? The committee still has items on their agenda, so if we could ask you to move into the hallway, that would be great.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so if possible, we still have to make a motion.
Do we need to make a motion to include the audio recording into Legisstar?
My concern is something that we already, like, we already record them, we already post them. It's not like we're trying to, these are.
My entertainment, recording is the, the record. My, my request is more for, you know, transparency and public access, to be able to have access to the recording online in Legisstar. It's not really related, I mean. So to speak.
The only question I have is in terms of the file size and type and what can be attached. And I think if you want to make a motion, that's fine, but I think that it's suffice for us to follow the committee's instruction that this is what you would like to have happen. We're happy to.
If you can.
If, right, so if it's technically feasible, we'll, we'll make sure that it happens in, in, in any case. So in terms of how we've been handling meeting recordings prior to that, we had IM set up a website, there's a link to it on our site. And so if, if we have to do a workaround so that someone sees, you know, audio recording and it takes them to a webpage, for example. So again, I, I think, I certainly have no problem in trying to make that happen for you, given the level of interest.
Okay, so first I would entertain a motion to introduce the audio into the record if possible.
That's automatic.
Right, yes. Right, it's, it is part of your rules and procedures that we record every meeting and to make that publicly available, you know, upon requests.
So do we need a motion? No, okay. All right, so I'd entertain a motion now to postpone the petition.
Some.
Second.
Got a motion in a second? Any further discussion on that item? Hearing none, all those in favor?
All right.
Aye. Okay, I'm gonna entertain a motion now for like a two-minute recess.
You just call recess, can't you?
Yeah. I'm gonna call recess, quick.
All right.